Just to remind the council to make sure that you're not supposed to hear now so you can get the recording.
We'll call our April 13, 2021 Windermere Police Department. Thank you for the guidance. Pray for peace through all the challenges that we have. We look forward to 92 of your blessings on all of our first responders and all of those that keep us safe here in the broad day and night. Amen. For our open forum of public comment tonight, we had Amy Carr, Susan Carter, and Brandon Hayes. We also have a hearing tonight published here, so some of those individuals who came in want to weigh for specific items. And I believe we also have a email and a comment that Robert has said so.
Yes, sir. I can go ahead and read that in an hour during the presentation.
Why don't we say that the presentation at the appropriate item, Amy Carr, would you like to speak now or defer?
I'm fine.
Okay, so you'll defer.
Yeah, I'll speak now.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, so go ahead and if you'll just come up and say your name and address, let me go ahead and give your public comment.
Do you want me to speak on that song or your tail?
Whatever it is that's for you there as you're speaking, it's difficult to see what you brought up.
Yes. Okay. My name is Amy Carr. I've lived in the Windermere area since 1991. Former owner of the Alliant Workshops, from classes in summer camp. My address is 3303, just a year court at Windermere. I live in the community that actually gave the new recreation center to the town of Windermere, which is the purpose of my coming and speaking this evening. I lived across the street, my grandpa was visiting from New York. We went across the street to go feed the fish off the little dock, only to discover that the entire railing has been removed, as well as the seating benches that made it very cozy, felt very safe. And it was very frightening as we kind of drove down to the dock to realize that we could have gone straight into the water. Preying my little six-year-old, imagine people never go back there. And I got frightened because I thought, what if a child, an adult, or a senior citizen accidentally fell into the water? It is, there's no public access to that link. I live on that lake, Lake Crescent. I'm told that that's where I can launch my boat, but there's no dock. There's no public access to the boat. Nor is that particular lake stocked with fish. So people feel the reason that they took the railing down was so that boats could pull up or people could go fishing. There's no such possibility. It's also a very small kind of area to go out on. So I learned, I did call one of the members of the Recreation Committee, I believe, and was informed that a committee of seven made this decision because they were recently railing and seating in the two other docks, also in Windermere, which do have access to the chain of lakes. So it's useful, obviously, to get on in an empty boat or go fishing, but not to the Lake Crescent. So I am asking, before there is a severe accident and a child falls into that water or a senior takes a misstep and falls into the water, there is no ladder to come fish yourself out of the water. There's no shoreline to swim to. And I think it's an incredibly dangerous situation. One size does not fit all. It's maybe one of three docks in Windermere, but this is not a boating or a fishing lake. I'm asking, please, please to restore that railing. So that is the purpose of my right visit. I haven't seen since talk to Travis, I think, from Recreation, whatever.
Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. And I do believe that he still has the railing that was taken down. So a truly additional expense, but for the safety of the people who are down. Because that's a beautiful part, which somebody with children playing there, families. I beg you, please don't let them be fatal accidents before we have to recognize the danger. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Amy Carr. Remember that Parks and Recreation, did we remove that for some of the similar reasons that we removed?
From what I understand, Parks and Recreation's standpoint was they intended that. And for those of you that are new to the council, it's that Windermere Recreation Center. So we've got the product brand, they put a new fishing gear at the very end of that island so you can access it. And when the design was created, I don't know if Scott amended it or not. But what the end result was, it wasn't conducive to actual fishing. You're unable to cast a line, so on and so forth. So Parks and Recreation made the recommendations to remove certain items so it would be more conducive to fishing. Now, it's not loading because you're not allowed to have motorized boats coming off of that island or off of Windermere Recreation Center based on the agreement that we have with those three HOAs. So we are creating a kayak launch there as well. But in no, no way were we hoping people would hook up to that. That fishing gear is mostly meant to be a fishing gear. So what they thought they did was to, you know, remove those items so it's easier to fish off of it. Checked with Travis and I think John as well. But we need all codes relative to what we remove and not make something that is not per code. So if you would want to request Parks and Recreation to take another look at that, so be it. Or you can direct me to go ahead and put it back. But in our may very clear that the intent was for fishing and that's what we.
And I can remember some of this. Thank you, Robert, for the insight. I mean, I would say that as long as council does not discreet, just to take a quick look, I'd rather do something like that. And I know it's difficult to serve all interests at the same time. That's a challenge. I know that, you know, Parks is the best and right and they could do it at that moment. So we can reach out where they were trying to go. Certainly, you know, maybe you take a look and make sure that's exactly what they wanted and what they intended. Maybe give us a little feedback back in the next week. If you go with, keep it the same or whether we think one would adjust that. Fair enough. Any objection you can come upon, I want to speak for all of you. That's fair. Amy, this part, we appreciate your input. Susan Carter, want to say Psalm Street? Do you want to speak now or would you like to defer to the other guy? Okay, Dave, do you know which one you want to defer to?
What's that?
Which one did you want to defer to, so I could jump on?
Um, medium relationship, the 500 block.
Okay, thank you very much. This is Brandon Hayes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Robert, did you want to read that comment? And should the phone run and save that for the items? This way we have our special presentations and proclamations. We have several service longevity awards as well as a promotion for one of our police officers. Keith, would you like to present?
Sure, sure. Great shit. I'll pull some of these things out. If I can have Officer Jornon and Officer Miller, Brian Miller. These two officers, we are celebrating their 10 years of service with the town of Windermere, Windermere Police Department. This is a special highlight for us as you remember mine. I'm past my 80 year here, 10 year with Windermere Police Department. And one of the things that we tried to work on very early on was establishing tenure with our police officers. That's something we never had before, to quite be honest with you. So I'm really happy to say that these two officers here have been with us for 10 years. There are only two or three officers that have been here a little bit longer than me. Everybody else has come along since that time. And it's such an honor to be able to do that. Officer Jornon and Officer Miller also, both are officer twos. If you remember, we had built out a professional mentoring program here about five years ago. With an officer one, two, and three program, then a supervisor program to make sure that we can train officers up within the A D C to take leadership roles and leadership positions. And I'm happy to say that both these two officers have done that. They're both field training officers with us. They're both extremely involved. One of the very interesting things about a small police department is that you have to wear lots of hats. So besides being F T O, then Orion, who takes your instructor, and Jeff does a lot of work with our policies and procedures. As you can see, he's playing close today because he's out on an injury. He's been out for quite some time with a shoulder surgery. So we're putting, we're putting them in work right now, actually redoing our policies and procedures. Not redoing them, but putting them in a different format so that we can apply our accreditation measures as soon as we get into this. This concrete building, Windermere, that we're building for us. So we're relaxing. So guys, today in recognition of your 10 years of dedication and honorable service as a citizen of the town of Windermere, the Central Florida Community, Windermere Police Department, I want to present you with all the dedication and service you worked. Thank you, guys, for your service. We truly appreciate it. Well, you guys may have family here. Want to call your family up to see if they're a fisher. Yeah, that's true, Brian. Congratulations, guys. I'm going to present today, Brian, with a longevity award as well. Many of you guys have heard before, we talked about the reserve program. So one of the things that we have here in the town of Windermere, we're so small, we have 14 full-time officers and we have six reserve officers. That's really important for typically when we have lots of functions, a lot of events and things that we do when we're not COVID season. Brian's been with our reserve police officers and also means that he volunteers his time in the service. He's been a police officer for over 40 years. He was full-time at one time. And that was just on weekends and holidays and special events and couple of salaries, tremendous M S A for us. So along with that, he's going to, we're going to celebrate his 5 years. So we're also going to give you a citation to the reserve unit. So the unit citation is presented to the Windermere Police Department Reserve Unit for outstanding demonstration and tour and dedication of town to Windermere. Throughout 2020, the Reserve Unit assisted with various community events, specialty care, and free. Despite many challenges faced with COVID, the Reserve Unit continued to support the uniform patrol man. Altogether, the Reserve Unit volunteered a total of 2,360 hours at a cost savings of nearly $64,000 in terms of money. Your commitment and diligence to the duty as well as to the duty in the town of Windermere is appreciated. Thank you for your service and today I present you with a unit citation. Along with the unit citation, we actually put all of our folks that volunteered for the Presidential Service Award. So Brian is going to get the Presidential Service Award for his volunteer hours, which is a silver award dedicated to him. He gave 250 hours, about 250 hours of service in town of Windermere. So thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. And if you haven't noticed, Brian's son, Ryan, is a full-time officer here. Hi, Sergeant Chip Erwin. Come on up. So I already explained to you our visitor's room and our build out, really cool. Sergeant Chip Erwin recently got promoted to the rank of sergeant. So today is kind of the ceremony and promotion. He's already out there working as a sergeant. When I promoted him, he decided to go on vacation for six months in Colorado. I got the great part, bridge against the timeline off. That was great. But one of the cool things that we did is we're such a small department that we hired an outside, we contracted an outside department to come in and do the testing process for our supervisors. So everybody had the same people, opportunity to participate in that. We had outside influences that came in and measured and evaluated everybody. And also Erwin was promoted to officer two to start a position. So he is out there in the streets already. If you remember Lieutenant Marcus Stevens, I think he was here in the field. He's still a reserve officer. He actually retired. When he retired or retired, then Sergeant Erwin was promoted and stepped up. So Chip, congratulations on your promotions. Chip, congrats, yeah. All right, and if I can have our new chaplain, Wes, keep up, come on up. So today we get to introduce to the mayor, our council members, and also residents, our newest chaplain for Windermere Police Department. So we have two chaplains. We've always had two chaplains. One of them recently is retiring and he's getting on retirement, he's retired actually some time ago. And we brought Wes aboard. You know, one of the really interesting things, I think we've known each other maybe about three years now. We both serve on the Rover Y M C A board right here in Winter Garden. And I can tell you, over the last couple of years, kind of watching this guy and getting to know this guy, he's a real leader in our community. I love community tremendously. And he's always just a super, super positive influence when I see him engaging people on social media, engaging folks in the community. I know just a few weeks ago, we did a bump in the bill together and he's just super, super engaged. So I just saw he would be the perfect asset for our police department and also for the residents of the town of Windermere. And if you guys don't know, and if some of you do know, you know, these guys can come and ride with our officers any single time that they want. They come, they have a key to the police department, they come and they go as they choose. We treat them to give, they're part of our family. And they can be used for our officers in a time of need or a time of difficulty or a time of stress. But equally, they're used for our residents quite a bit. And we call upon our chaplains many, many times when we have unfortunate incidents in the town to help relieve the stress and talk to our residents and just be a partner and have what we kind of call administrative presence. So today I want to introduce you to chaplain as well as we get to kind of give him a note. So he gets a note as a chaplain. I'll let him say a few words afterwards. Wes, will you raise your hand if you want? Make sure you're here. Everybody have a name. As a chaplain, as a law enforcement chaplain.
I was a law enforcement chaplain.
I solemnly pledge.
I solemnly pledge.
That I will faithfully and diligently.
I will faithfully and diligently.
Fulfill the duties of law enforcement chaplain.
Fulfill the duties of law enforcement chaplain.
The Windermere Police Department. And the town of Windermere.
The town of Windermere.
That I will provide comfort.
I'll provide comfort.
And spiritual support.
And spiritual support.
For the officers and citizens.
The officers and citizens.
Of the community. I will not use my position as a law enforcement chaplain.
I will not use my position as a law enforcement chaplain.
Rosulateize.
Rosulateize.
Disparage other religions.
Disparage other religions.
Use public resources to aid any church.
Use public relationships to aid any church.
Religious denominations.
Religious denominations.
And violations of Florida state's constitutions.
And violations of Florida state laws and constitutions.
Shall not, I shall not discriminate against any individual.
I shall not discriminate against any individual.
Race, based upon race.
Based upon race.
Color.
Color.
Religion.
Religion.
Sex.
Sex.
National origin.
National origin.
Age.
Age.
Veteran, veteran status.
Veteran status.
Political affiliation.
Political affiliation.
Marital or handicap status. As a chaplain, I strive.
As a chaplain, I strive.
To set an exemplary standard and ethical, an exemplary standard of ethical and moral conduct.
To set an exemplary standard.
Ethical and moral conduct.
Ethical and moral conduct.
Not interfere with any officer's performance of his duties.
Not interfere with the officer's performance of his duties.
Perform the hall laws.
Perform the hall laws.
All policies.
All policies.
And hold everything to the strictest of standards.
And hold everything to the strictest of standards.
I'll be available for the duties of law enforcement.
I'll be available for the duties of law enforcement.
For the town of, for the residents of Windermere.
For the residents of Windermere.
I say your name.
I, Wes Meacham.
Agree to uphold the law enforcement chaplain's pledge.
Agree to uphold the law enforcement's pledge.
So that'll be, so that'll be good. Congrats, and I look forward to working with you.
Only if Tezzer has a shot of getting through that, it's sort of.
That was very, very good. This is my wife and my fiance. I've been here for 16 years. I have a 13-year-old daughter, her name is Hope. I have a 10-year-old son. And the two little ones are our six-year-old twins. And once they were announced, yes, absolutely. I was, I was thinking on the way here today, when I was about five years old, my grandpa was talking to a police officer and I thought to myself, this would be the coolest job in the world. And then I got older and realized it is probably one of the hardest jobs in the world. And so when we launched our church a little over six years ago, I knew I wanted to be involved in serving the men and women who serve the city. I know it's a tireless job and it's a painless job, so I would do my best to serve these men and women that serve this city so well. If there's anything I can do for any of you guys in this town, I'd love to serve in any way as possible as well. Thank you, guys. Congrats. That'll be it for me. So we said, don't give a chaplain or keep the police microphone too long.
Speaking of standing service, I can add John's given and Travis's advice up here. Those of you who know or have lived in the town of Windermere in your sixties, there is a lot of passion for our community itself, but also a passion for the roads, the infrastructure, the facilities. And most all that we get are related to public works. So a lot of times it's a dangerous job. But over the past five months prior to us hiring our new public works director, two guys stood up here pretty much kept the fire burning. And I heard nothing but great praises. I typically, I would receive a little phone call once a day or, you know, more than once a day. But during the time that they were able to fill in the gap that we had. Their job is just recognizing the last town council meeting, was it or not? And want to make sure that we provided them something that they could actually show the families and friends who are hanging up in the office. So with that said. Yes, sir. It's definitely a job. It's for the, it's not our only goal. So this is, and Travis's advice, recognition of your service and dedication to town of Windermere in transition period within Public Works Department, November 20th, April 2021. Job well done, Senator, this 13th day of April 2021. Again, this is Senator John Smith. It's given in recognition of your service and dedication to town of Windermere during the transition period in the Public Works Department, November 2020 through April 2021. Job well done, Senator, this 13th day of April 2021. If Travis has anything to say, I ask John, if he has anything to say. I'm going to be here till probably midnight, but I'll talk to you aside. I didn't do an intense job. And you guys are now perfect fit for the town. Those of you that don't know, Travis has been here 21 years. And John is a resident of the town of Windermere and has worked with the town for 18 years. So a lot of wealth, knowledge, and a lot of dedication to this town, so thank you, guys.
Here's longevity numbers. That makes you really proud. And that's what happens when you strive for excellence. Full that couldn't have a small group of anyone who want to stay at 10 years. Kind of officers here now. And probably you guys appreciate the confidence in us. But it'd all be the same, you know, working hard, striving as good as we possibly can. And be everything that our buddy, we're going to work really hard to be excellent. Work, and have the tools that you need to be. Thank you all very much. All right, on to agenda number three. These are time items that include time of public period. We're in this first presentation, our words number 2021. In terms of the building heights, they're saying 35 feet, which is the requirement within the master plan, and it's actually a requirement generally within the town. The building that would be at the corner of 6th and Main, people have a portion of that, it's two stories, but it'll still be less than 35. It won't exceed 35 feet. It'll have internal Austrian parking and stormwater, and as the master plan shows on the portion of the property that is adjacent to Oakdale on the back, they are going to provide, because they have to provide, they're not asking for any waivers or deviations from this, they have to provide a 20-foot buffer along the frontage, along the frontage there with Oakdale, along the portion of 6th that's within the parking area. They are going to provide that. They have to provide a 20. Now, that 20-foot buffer also includes a landscape buffer, includes landscaping and a 6-foot wall. So there's a wall, landscaping. The landscaping will be on the outside of the wall, so on the side of the wall that faces Oakdale. So people aren't looking at a blank wall face, they would be looking at landscaping. The wall would be behind the landscape. That is a requirement on your master plan. That is how the master plan provides for the buffering to those properties there on Oakdale across the street. I know when we did the workshop, one of the question was, how much is already on the property? Just to get an idea. So current, based on the property graver records, currently on the property with the existing businesses that are there, and the two homes, I took the homes and took their square footage, there's about 10,774 square feet of office, retail, the ice cream shop, and the two single-family homes. That's how much is already on that property. So if you take that, less than the 21,750, you know, the net change is just under 11,000 square feet, 10,976 square feet. So that's just an informational thing, it doesn't have any regulatory purpose, but I know that was a question that was raised, so I wanted to answer that for you all this evening. Next, please. Here is a preliminary development plan that's been provided to you tonight. I will say from the start, I know a lot of questions are, well, why don't we have more details? Why doesn't it have more information? Preliminary development plan doesn't necessarily provide that level of detail that a lot of people want to see. That the final development plan absolutely will, quite onto a project Friday, even more than what people will want to see, in terms of the detail that needs to be provided. But what, so this shows that right now the preliminary development plan, so you can see the buildings there on Main Street. There's two buildings that front Main with a courtyard between the two of them. I'm coming to them now. And then you see a courtyard between them. Those are the only buildings that will be on site. The rest of the property then would be developed with parking, stormwater, landscaping, and then, and then the buffer that Robert then is pointing out there, is the 20-foot buffer that is required. You also see on the master plan here, this is required under traffic, which we'll talk about later, but they also require to put in a right turn lane for traffic to enter into the property. They're also limited by the master plan. The master plan has its limitations. They're only allowed to access right in and right out on Sixth Avenue. So that driveway there only allows a right in and a right out, it does not allow left turns into the property. That is a requirement of your master plan. That is, that is limited. The only other access to the property is off of Fifth Avenue on the north side of the property. That would be a full access off of Fifth into the property. There is no access onto Oakdale Street. It will be, the stormwater and buffering will be the only thing along Oakdale Street. There will be no driveways, no access along Oakdale. And those that I, and you can see now, actually, don't go on, Robert, I can put my next one on. Next slide, please. One of the big questions we have is tree impacts up in here. So as we discussed at the workshop, the applicant was in the process of taking a new tree survey. The one that was submitted was outdated. We did receive that new tree survey. We received it on Friday, on April 9th, and that's what I did leave at each of your spots this evening, the large-scale plan sheet. That is the new survey that was submitted. We had it both digitally, and that's the hard copy for you, so we have updated that. At this point in the process, we haven't gone through the process of determination, because we don't have the final design, but that is absolutely part of the final development plan process, is using that updated survey, matching it to the master plan, or matching it to the development plan, and figuring out what can be protected, what needs to mitigate, and what can we change to help protect trees out there. But what's also important to remember, this project, like any other development in Towne of Winder here, is subject to the town's tree protection mitigation ordinance. They don't get any waiver from that. If they're removing trees, they're going to have to pay the town tree mitigation fee, like any other developer or project would in the Towne of Winder. It doesn't meet the requirements for behavior to amount, but they're, they're, they're subject to all the same standards as any other development would be as we go through this process. And again, as I've said, the tree mitigation, that's what's determined at the time in the final development plan, because that's when we actually have the real footprints of what's going to be happening out there. Right now, we have concepts and ideas, but we need to know what the actual footprint of the development would be to determine what that mitigation would be if an hour would be best addressed. Next, please, Robert. I just put this into the PowerPoint, this is what you all have in your seat, I know folks out here can't see it, but it is available. That is a new tree survey that's documenting all the trees and their sizes and their types, so that is an updated, actually, the tree list, Robert, is on the left, to the right, the little list.
Right here.
Right there. That, there's numbers that key, that keys to the numbers on the survey, which tells the size and the type of tree this is. So we do have that information now, and that will be used in. Next, please. This, what I did here just again is just to show at this point, this preliminary, I did an overlay of that tree survey with the proposed preliminary development plan, just to get an idea. And again, like I said, this really doesn't tell us a whole lot at this point, because we got to get to the final development plan. But it's not unexpected, there, you know, we're going to have to work through the tree issue as this moves forward, on how to best mitigate, how to get, avoid impacts. That, that will be a high priority as we move forward. But there will be impacts to the trees as part of this project, as there would be at any project in the downtown area. But so this is the preliminary, as we get into the final, that would then be. Next, please. Traffic, another very important issue that we have lots of questions about. So as part of the submittal for this project, the applicant was required to provide a traffic study done by a professional traffic engineer. They did provide that traffic study of the traffic. And I will tell you, the traffic study was based on more development than what the proposing map. It actually was calculated based on a little 26,000 square feet of uses, where we're only looking at 21,750. So it does account for more than actually what we're looking at at this moment. And what we did with that traffic study, as you know, the town's consulting engineer, Kelly Horn Associates, who are unlucky enough to be here tonight, they did review the traffic study for the town of, for this project. And in Kelly Horn's review, they made a recommendation that the developer or the applicant was provided right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound E6 Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide a right-hand
...or conditions or development standards on top of the underlying land use for zoning on the property. So in this case, to implement a master plan that identifies those properties as part of the master plan that has to be developed with the master plan, that boundary within your future land use map, within your zoning map, within your comprehensive plan, within your land development code says, this property has to be developed consistent with the master plan. The master plan only allows those yellow properties to be developed as parking and buffering and stormwater. I know there's been some questions of why can't they just build more houses back there? The reason is the master plan. The master plan is adopted that says these properties can only be developed consistent with the master plan, so consistent with that plan. And the town council may recall, we had an amendment two years ago here on Fifth, and that property was removed from the master plan. So the only way that would change, you would have to change the master plan, you'd have to change the map, you'd have to change the designation. So those properties, the way their designation is within the town, can only be developed consistent with the master plan, which is for building. Next, please. In terms of a little bit of detail of the project, so what the request is, they're requesting to build up to, and this is a maximum, again, it can always be less, but it can't be more. There's 21,750 square feet of retail, restaurant, and office space. That's what the request is. In terms of the building heights, they're saying 35 feet, which is the requirement within the master plan, and it's actually a requirement generally within the town. The building that will be at the corner of Sixth and Main, people have a portion of that, it's two stories, but it'll still be less than 35, it won't exceed 35 feet. It'll have internal off street parking and stormwater, and as the master plan shows on the portion of the property that is adjacent to Oakdale on the back, they are going to provide, because they have to provide, they're not asking for any waivers or deviations from this, they have to provide a 20-foot buffer along the frontage there with Oakdale, along the portion of Sixth that's within the parking area. They are going to provide that, they have to provide a 20. Now, that 20-foot buffer also includes a landscape buffer, includes landscaping and a six-foot wall. So there's a wall, landscaping, the landscaping will be on the outside of the wall, so on the side of the wall that faces Oakdale, so people aren't looking at a blank wall face, they would be looking at landscaping, the wall would be behind the landscaping. That is a requirement on your master plan, that is how the master plan provides for the buffering to those properties there on Oakdale across the street. I know when we did the workshop, one of the questions was, how much is already on the property, just to get an idea? So based on the property graver records, currently on the property with existing businesses that are there, and two homes, I took the homes and took their square footage, there's about 10,774 square feet of office, retail, the ice cream shop, and the two single family homes. That's how much is already on that property. So if you take that, less than the 21,750, you know, the net change is just under 11,000 square feet, 10,976 square feet. So that's just an informational thing, it doesn't have any regulatory purpose, but I know that was a question that was raised, so I wanted to answer that for you all this evening. Next, please. Here is a preliminary development plan that's been provided to you tonight. I will say through the start, I know a lot of questions are, well, why don't we have more detail, why doesn't it have more information? Preliminary development plan doesn't necessarily provide that level of detail that a lot of people want to see, that the final development plan absolutely will, quite onto a property Friday, more than what people would want to see, in terms of the detail that needs to be provided. But what, so this shows that right now the preliminary development plan, so you can see the buildings there on Main Street, there's two buildings that front Main with a courtyard between the two of them, I'm coming to them now, and then you see a courtyard between them, those are the only buildings that will be on site. The rest of the property then would be developed with parking, stormwater, landscaping, and then, and then the buffer that Robert then is pointing out there, is the 20-foot buffer that is required. You also see on the master plan here, and this is required under traffic, which we'll talk about later, but they also require to put in a right turn lane for traffic to enter into the property. They're also limited by the master plan, the master plan has its limitations, they're only allowed to access right in and right out on Sixth Avenue. So that driveway there only allows a right in and a right out, it does not allow left turns into the property, that is a requirement of your master plan, that is, that is limited. The only other access to the property is off of Fifth Avenue on the north side of the property, that would be a full access off of Fifth into the property, there is no access onto Oakdale Street. It will be, the stormwater and buffering will be the only thing along Oakdale Street, there will be no driveways, no access along Oakdale. And those are the, and you can see now, actually, go on, Robert, I can put my next point on this. Next slide, please. One of the big questions we have is tree impacts over here. So as we discussed at the workshop, the applicant was in the process of taking a new tree survey, the one that was submitted was old nowadays, we did receive that new tree survey, we received it on Friday on April 9th, and that's what I did leave at each of your spots this evening, the large scale plan sheet. That is the new survey that was submitted, we had it both digitally, and that's the hard copy for you, so we have updated that. At this point in the process, we haven't gone through the process of term mitigation because we don't have the final design, but that is absolutely part of the final development plan process, is using that updated survey, matching it to the master plan, or matching it to the development plan, and figuring out what can be protected, what needs to mitigate, what can be changed to help protect trees out there. But what's also important to remember, this project, like any other development in Town of Windermere, is subject to the town's tree protection mitigation ordinance, so they don't get any waiver from that. If they're removing trees, they're going to have to pay the town tree mitigation, like any other development or project would in the Town of Windermere, it doesn't meet the requirements for behavior to amount, but they're, they're, they're subject to all the same standards as any other development would be as we go through this process. And again, as I've said, the tree mitigation, that's what's determined at the time in the final development plan, because that's when we actually have the real footprints of what's going to be happening out there. Right now, we have concepts and ideas, but we need to know what the actual footprint of the development would be to determine what that mitigation would be if an hour would be best addressed. Next, please, Robert. I just put this into the PowerPoint, this is what you all have in your seat, I know folks out here can't see it, but it is available, that is a new tree survey document, and all the trees and their sizes and their types, so that is an updated, actually, the tree list, Robert, is on the left, to the right, the little list.
Right here.
Right there. There's numbers that key, that keys to the numbers on the survey, which tell the size and the type of tree that's there. So we do have that information now, and that will be used in. Next, please. This, what I did here, just again, is just to show at this point, this preliminary, I did an overlay of that tree survey with the proposed preliminary development plan, just to get an idea. And again, like I said, this really doesn't tell us a whole lot at this point, because we got to get to the final development plan. But it's not unexpected, there, you know, we're going to have to work through the tree issue as this moves forward, on how to best mitigate, how to get, avoid impacts, that will be a high priority as we move forward. But there will be impacts to the trees as part of this project, as there would be at any project in downtown area. But so this is the preliminary, as we get into final, that would then be. Next, please. Traffic, another very important issue that I have lots of questions about. So as part of the submittal for this project, the applicant was required to provide a traffic study done by a professional traffic engineer, they did provide that traffic study of the traffic, and I will tell you, the traffic study was based on more development than what the proposing map, it actually was calculated based on only 26,000 square feet of uses, where we're only looking at 21,750. So it does account for more than actually what we're looking at at this moment. And what we did with that traffic study, as you know, the town's consulting engineer, Kenley Horne Associates, who I'm lucky enough to be tonight, they did review the traffic study for the town of, for this project, and in Kenley Horne's review, they made a recommendation that the developer or the applicant was provided a right-hand turn lane into the property from Westbound East Sixth Avenue. And the applicant, as you see under the development plan, they have agreed to provide that right-hand turn lane. And the reason for that is, as we all know, is the queuing that's happening, coming into the roundabout, and to be able to get this traffic out of that queue into the property without necessarily causing additional backlog. So that does help in terms of the operational. And also, as many are aware, you know, the town is also considering improvements to the existing roundabout, East Sixth Avenue and Main Street to improve the traffic flow. So there are improvements that can help with traffic, again, that won't solve the traffic issue, because as we all know, the traffic issue in the town is not town-generated, it's from everybody around us. Next, please. A little bit more detail, and I'm going to, the first point here again, is that there's only the property right in or right out on East Sixth Avenue, full on East Fifth, with no access on Oakdale. In terms of the generation, when we do traffic analysis, we really like to focus on the peak hours trips, which I believe we spoke about at the workshop, here, just so I have in my presentation, one of the questions was, well, what's the net change between what's already out there and what could be there? So when we look at the net change from trips that are already generated based on estimates, these are not traffic counts, these are estimates based on the generation rates, we look at a net change in the morning peak of about 14 trips, and in the afternoon peak of about 39 trips, and if you add up those three together, you end up with an average of about 27 trips. So that would be the net change from what is out there today.
Brad Hope Long is a PMP or a PMP, 10 hours?
They are, they are between four and, seven to nine and four and six. Robert, I do have to correct something that we did say at the workshop, I was incorrect by dividing that by three, that was not, and I spoke with Kenley Horne about that. Basically, what this tells you, within that period, that's the highest number of trips within any one hour. So, you know, in the other hours, it would be less than that, that's the highest hour within that peak here, it's not divided by those three, it's not divided by those three, it's the highest peak within that time period.
So it would be 14 trips per hour during those peak hours?
It'd be 14 at the highest, and then the other hours, it would be less than 14. So in the evening, the highest would be 39, the other hour period on either side of that would be less than 39. But these are the peaks, these are the peaks with the peak hours that.
What is considered a trip?
Just so everybody understands, is that if you're not at the podium, we can't hear you, so there'll be a ring up for public comment after the presentations, and we'll be able to address that.
And I think what I was saying, next, man, you can address that. How these are generated, these are generated based on what's called trip generation rates that are published by the Institute of Traffic Engineers. These are average rates of certain land use types, the typical or the average number of vehicles coming and going to a property. So when you see these 14 and 39 numbers, that's actually whose cars coming in and cars coming out, it's not just everybody going the one way, it's actually both sides, I'm giving you the total, it's both. But these, that is the professionally accepted way that you do trip, or traffic estimates when you have a closed project, because we don't know until you put out traffic count and have it, what the actual traffic is. So the way you do it is you do the professional analysis using this traffic engineer's data, which is professionally accepted, and that provides the documentation to generate the calculation of the trips. And to make a fair comparison with the existing development, you know, we didn't put traffic counters out there either, we applied those same generation rates to the existing development, so we had an appers-to-appers comparison, because we're using square footage based on the rates. But that's how those rates are determined, they're determined through the Institute of Traffic Engineers professional accepted trip generation rates for land use types. Thank you, Harvey. Next, please. In terms of water and sewer services, so the water, this project will have water service from Orange County Utilities, they will be connecting to portable water from Orange County. In terms of the set, in terms of the sewer, there will be a septic system on the property, there's no sewer for the property, and we did have a lot of discussion about this at the workshop. As the council is aware, at this point in the plan, we do not have any information on the septic system, we don't know where it would be located or how they could be. So the impact of that, as they move forward, if this is approved, is that it could very much result in a reduction in what they're proposing to do now, because they are going to have to provide for a drainage field, an area that cannot be paved, a drainage field, so that could then take a parking area, which then would reduce the amount that they'd be able to build. So there is a potential impact to the final development plan as they go through the septic permitting as part of the final development plan. So there is a bit of a risk that the developer takes, or the applicant takes, by not having that answer now, because at the end of the day, they may not come out as much as they think they're going to come out. But that's not an issue for the town, that's a risk that the developer takes, because we know they can never go over 21,750, and my expectation would be they'll probably be less once they start sizing the septic system. But that information will come to the town as part of the final development plan, it's just not as part of this project. But there are. Facade elevations, this is the one waiver that they are now asking for, I will back up a bit, in their application, they asked for two waivers, only for the middle standards. The one waiver was for the one-foot topo, their new survey that's submitted does provide facade elevations, that doesn't need that, so they no longer need that waiver at this point. But they are still asking for the waiver to provide the actual facades for the proposed buildings. But what the applicant has committed to, and I'm sure they'll discuss it with their presentation, and they really don't have a way around it, they have to meet the architectural design standards of your town center guidelines, they have to meet, they have to design the buildings that meet those standards. And also to be consistent with the other work that's going on here within downtown, the new town facilities, the new brewery, but they have to meet the design standards. When they come with the final development plan, they come in with that, they will have to provide us those building elevations, those architectural elevations for the council's review consideration. But again, they are, they have to meet those design standards, and they have recognized that and committed to that. Next, please. The last part we have is, as part of the PUD, the town council is able to put conditions on the development to help to assure consistency with the requirements of your land development code of your comprehensive plan and for impacts to the community. So there is an attachment to the ordinance, I believe this is an attachment B, that has the proposed conditions. I'm not going to read through all of them, because there's many of them, but I'm going to hit the highlights of the main sections of them. And I do believe the way we drafted these is to try to address the best we could, a lot of the concerns and comments we heard at the workshop, both from the council as well as from the public, so we tried to account for that the best we could. So the number one part that you see in these conditions that you have before you is, there's requirements part of the final development plan that they're going to have to enter to an agreement with the town council on transportation and utilities, mitigation and things. What the transportation one is looking at is for a participation of the applicant in potential improvements to the roundabout, and potential improvements to pedestrian access. There's no commitment to that at this point in the preliminary development plan, but that would be up for discussion as part of this agreement if this moves forward. So there is that requirement, that the developer, the applicant, who works with the town, the town council, for an agreement, but those are the two areas that we're looking for, that cooperation with the development. In terms of utilities, that was pretty straightforward, they're bringing water into the site, just making it clear the town has no responsibility, no financial obligation to assist in that matter. So it just, just has what you're reading, it's just real. There's several conditions under the final development plan requirements, and what we did with those conditions, we put, I believe, quite a bit of emphasis on the tree protection and mitigation and landscaping and buffering, to make sure that as the developers preparing that final development plan to come back before the development report in the town council, that they're using their best efforts to protect as much as the tree penalty has as feasible as part of the project, and also mitigating for what they can. So we have that requirement in there, they have provided, they made a tree protection removal plan as part of the final development plan, so we will have a lot of information about trees and how to protect as much as we can on the property and how to mitigate for what we can't on the property, there's a lot of focus on that. There's also the focus on the buffering, ensuring that that buffer there along Oakdale is appropriate, meets the standards and requirements of it, and meets the needs for the buffering there, so there's that, that's those conditions. Also, the stormwater, again, stormwater management, they've got it, you know, this will require permitting through the South Water Management District for the stormwater, as well as going through the town's process. But again, an emphasis on the stormwater, one of the conditions we have is encourage to use a permeable pavement and materials on the property to the most, create a sustainable to help with that mitigation, so that is part of the conditions that are proposed. We have design standard compliance, that's just again saying they have to meet all the design standards of the design district. We talked about the utilities, and also the buffering of surrounding properties within that, those are the conditions. The next area within those conditions is construction management. So what that part of these conditions address is the emphasis on construction staging, you know, how the staging or how, where the vehicles are going to be parked, or materials will be stored, what kind of screening would happen to the surrounding area during construction, so there's the focus on the stage. There's also in terms of the construction impacts, limit on the hours of construction, which is a pretty standard condition we have during the town with projects, let's propose in there, which is consistent with what we had at Estancia, and we currently have at Down Reserve, is Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So limitation on, which is actually more restricted than the general town limitations on construction. So we have several conditions related to that. There's a section related to permitted land use, which is consistent with the town requirements for the allowed land uses. Within your comprehensive plan, it already has a list that defines what are the allowed land uses, so this just reiterates that, but it does provide some additional restrictions. There is a, currently in the draft, talks about prohibiting drive-through facilities and fast food restaurants, we have some prohibitions in there as well, as part of the land uses. And the last point that I want to point out, this was one topic that's brought up at the workshop, is requiring the applicant to come to the town council before they submit that final development plan, I believe a council member, David, brought this issue up at the workshop. And what we've proposed is that three points prior to that final development plan submission, prior to going to public hearings, that they will come back before the town council for workshops, public workshops that will be noticed, open to the public, to kind of go through their stages of their plan development. So the town council can provide feedback as they get along instead of wait till the very end and hit them at the end with twenty comments. So there is that requirement as part of these conditions, is having kind of working dialogue with council as they develop the final master plan, or final development plan. Next, please. The last point I needed to provide to the council, we did provide this PUD conditions to the applicant late last week, they have been a preliminary review of them, and they may have some proposed revisions to what you're seeing this evening. So what will happen, based on the discussion this evening and any changes that the council has, these conditions may change between now and your final hearing on June 8th. Any changes that the council have, we can make, and then we'll also provide to council any proposed changes that the applicant would request will also be presented to you on June 8th. So just want to make that clear to everyone, that the conditions you see today may be a bit different when they come back to you in June 8th, based on today's discussion, and then whatever the applicant may request, we'll also have. Again, you're under no obligation to accept their suggestions, but it is for your consideration, and you may accept them if you desire to. Next, please. So what are the next steps? I already talked about PUD conditions, again, the second public hearing for this will be on June 8th, 2021, and that will be the final public hearing. Again, if approved at that June 8th meeting, the applicant then will prepare the final development plan, come back for more public hearings, the development report in the town council. And again, I think the most important part is, if this is approved, no development is authorized until they get through that final development plan process. So nothing gets approved for development if this is approved. And that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Brad. I think at this point, they'll probably have you back for questions after we give the public hearing, at this point, give Mr. Carley opportunity to speak. Mr. Paulson, present.
My name's Jim Paul, I'm a, here in Orlando, local land use planner, I've been doing this a long time. Jim, a long time, if you should go to our.
Trying to.
That's cool. We've been in this process with the town, I think it's like almost exactly two years to the day, so we've become very good friends, Rob and Brad, over the course of that time, and I think they would both agree that through this process, we have come to a pretty close meeting of the minds, I think when you see the PowerPoint, most of what Brad has told you, we'll just go through very quickly, because we're concurring on almost all of the different points.
Let's me take a minute, I apologize.
It was a beautiful day, Jim. It wasn't that humid, it was coming, it was everyone needs to enjoy what we have right now. I've always said, I was never much, I was born in the north, snow skiing, you know, December was my thing, but people that leave Florida in March to go out west and snow ski. March is the greatest month of the year for, and wanting to ever be, I'm not sure, if you're ski enthusiastic, it must be the best ski time, so yeah, I like staying here.
Continue.
I apologize, we have just transferred different computers, so I'm still trying to get used to it, but I think if you've been in the town council many years, you always have one of these hiccups.
I'm thinking the same thing.
No, absolutely not. I'm sure Jason Bond was on it, slightly on this computer, it's like all the cars are breaking down. I guess he's not just popping up.
I can just get on that, I don't know if you see that or not, but you see the same situation?
It's on the.
Eighteen.
No, the.
Yeah, I think we do.
Oh, popped out.
Right now.
Oh, popped out.
One teenager's left.
You know, we're not serving supper.
Is there a countdown, Chris, behind you? Is there a countdown behind you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jackie, do you have the remote control?
Sure do.
Yeah, this computer's completely dead.
Thankfully, my contract was approved two months ago, so.
Yeah, good idea.
That same computer didn't present a page to the last presentation?
What's that?
The one that we just did, did you do it on the black computer?
This one's mine, and it's easier through the, through Zoom, but for some reason, I don't know if the cable or the computer just froze up.
You can, you can go to the next slide. Okay, so Jim Carr is here with his, with his wife. They've owned the property for seventeen years. A lot of years, a lot of years. And so I've been here doing what I'm doing tonight for thirty-three years, mostly for private, either landowners or developers. The transportation study was done by Tony Luke. I actually met Tony Luke in my first professional meeting on a project that I'm, on I drive in nineteen eighty-eight, so we've worked together for thirty-four years. And Joe Sammett, I've known him a long time, he is the foremost arborist in the state of Florida with fifty-five years of experience. He's been the one helping and guiding on what we can do to try to preserve and save the trees. That's it. So as Brad mentioned, this is a preliminary development plan. And what it really is, is a fairly detailed zoning application. And so with zoning, you have to be aware that in the state of Florida, your bedrock foundation of development rights comes from the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan says this project must go through a preliminary development plan, become a special zoning in the town. Only way you can go forward, comprehensive plan says it, you can't get deviation, you can't get around it, whatever the comp plan says, you must do. So that's how we got into this process. But with the zoning, what the comp plan says is that, as Brad mentioned, he's looked through very well, that the main street frontage will be buildings, behind that will be parking and buffer. What the zoning does is it sets how many square feet of building we can do, how tall the buildings can do, where the buildings are placed, and your town center design guidelines lay that out. At the bottom of the screen, kind of underlined in red, Brad's already told you this, this approval that we're moving through grants says no development approvals at all. All it does is set the standards for when we go to the next step, the final development plan, as to what you should expect to see. That's what we're here tonight, is to set the standards, and then you'll see the real final details at the next step. Next slide, please. So we already know where the location is, the next. And again, this is just what I was talking about, that your comprehensive plan, which is your foundation development rights for the town, you have a policy, one four twenty-one says there is a town center district, and we're in it. One four two two says if you are gonna do that, you have to do a P U D. And then one four three says the P U D is a special district within the land development regulations that is flexible, and it's really about trying to conform to the, to the comp plan and to the site and the name, and that's what we're trying to do. Next. So they are the future land use specific nations. And again, there's been a lot of, you know, misunderstanding on why the back is yellow and why it's not residential, but that's because the comp plan tells you to go to these town center design guidelines, which are your land development. Next. So that's it, the town center overlay, that's the cover. And this is the purpose of the town center guidelines, and it's to promote diverse, compatible, pedestrian-friendly architecture that creates a sense of place. And that's what we've really striven to do with this preliminary development plan and the preliminary site plan that we have now. It also starts talking about facades and signage that we believe, as you'll hear, that really getting into the facades tonight, you know, June 8th, is just a little premature, and for a few reasons that we'll talk about next. So Brad has already shown us, the orange on Main Street is where the buildings must go, and the white is where the parking must go, and then you can see the green buffer that goes along Sixth and Oakdale. Those are guarantees from the comp plan, no deviations, we're not asking for any deviations, we're trying to follow those explicitly. These are some of the other town guidelines. As, you're probably comfortable with Main Street, the buildings are supposed to come right up to the property line, so that there's the curve of the street to a pedestrian rail of sidewalks and planting, right up to the front store, to the front of the store or the restaurant or the office building, it's, it's right there on the property line. And so we are following that to the greatest, we're following that as best as can be, as we're seeing them. So this is our idea of the project, and I think it matches what you saw about the town center overlay. Purpose is, it's a mixture of non-residential uses, it's just not all one use. There's no fast food restaurants or anything, but we're talking about some retail uses, some food and beverage, and some office uses, which is what you find on Main Street today. We're looking for that to be designed and done in such a way that it's flexible, that over the decades, if this restaurant closes, it can become something different, if the store changes out, it can become a different store, and all those things can happen. So we're looking to try to design it in a way to create that flexibility, to let it go on for years and years. I mean, those buildings, some of them have been there since the sixties, so it's, it's a long time that we're looking to make this project work. And we've also tried to do things to really make it, really as the purpose of the town center overlay is, it's a great pedestrian spot for residents and guests that are here in Windermere. And there's our request for the square footage maximus. Never can go higher, might could go lower due to parking and septic, but those would be our maximus. Next, please. So this is a diagram. On the left is our application, and on the right is the requirements of the town center design guidelines, and it matches exact. So we have buildings in the north section, and we have parking in the white section, and we have the buffer that goes around. So what we're proposing exactly matches what the comp plan, the undeviable comp plan says we must do. Next. This is the site plan. The red box indicates where that orange area was, and that's where all our buildings are. We'll stay all within the building area. Actually, we have a little parking that goes into the building area. What you can see is, at the north, next to the brick building, there will be about a five thousand square foot building that we're thinking will be retail. And then there's a courtyard, there's a significant oak tree that sits there that we have tried to design this whole project around, but in that courtyard, you'll have a large oak tree that will be saved in the courtyard. And then to the south, it's mostly a one-story building with a section of two-story, that the second story is probably office, and the first story is retail and the food and beverage that we're hoping to do. So if you go back real quick, so again, we're exactly conforming to the town center design guidelines. We have the twenty-foot buffer on the south and on the east, the parking's behind the building, we have the right in, right out off Sixth, the full access off Fifth, we have a loading zone for serving the buildings, and we have the six-foot wall. You can also see all the green circles, those are all heritage-sized oak trees that are being preserved on this, on this project. So in particular, the three on Main Street, that we're doing everything we can to save the three trees that are out there in front of the wheelchair building now, to make sure they stay, because as we're walking along that sidewalk, you get a lot of character from those pictures. Next. Again, so this is how the parking is set up in the town center design guidelines. On the little diagram on the bottom left, you can see the landscape and the wall, and then the parking's in behind it, we followed that, the size of the parking spaces, the requirements for islands in the parking spaces, we exactly conform to every one of those standards from your comp plan and your town center design guidelines. Then as to how the site plan relates for the buildings and location away, the town center design guidelines actually kind of offered up that maybe we should do that mid-block opening between the buildings to connect the parking to the street, so we took advantage of that, particularly when that tree was there, that we could then create this whole nice outdoor space that some users can spill out there on the weekends, and it, it could be a really interesting people place when the activity is high. So we've exactly conformed to the frontage requirements, there won't be any blank facades, there won't be any buildings that are designed architecturally that are, that are fifty feet, and will, they have to be broken up into twenty-foot bays, and we have that mid-block crossing. So it exactly conforms to this section of the guidelines. Next. This is the two sheets in your town center design guidelines that deal with architecture. And so it sets out building height, and it sets up this twenty-foot module, and it has some provisions that awnings can hang out over the sidewalk. And so as we've done and followed the town center design guns exactly, for all the site planning that we've done, we're gonna follow the architectural guidelines exactly when we come back to you with the final development plan. The reason for that is, being that we've been in this for two years, and the project was twenty-six thousand square feet at one time, twenty-four, now it's a hundred twenty-two, and it just keeps changing. You spend a lot of money drawing up facades. And as you can see with the, the drawing on the, the right, the look of the facade can be almost anything. So we have worked and worked with your staff to say, we'd like to just do that in final development plan, we think it's premature now to get in, spend all that money to understand that, because primarily is the septic. And the septic for a store, the septic for a house, or, or an office, it's less than your house. So there's no real concern about how you really make the septic work for the retail and the office. It's the restaurant. And so that's the real key. Jim's been working closely with some new technology that's coming out, it's almost like a little small package plant that you have for your property, and that's what we're exploring for the restaurant, because depending on the size of the restaurant, then the size of this septic tank slash plant changes dramatically. So until we really kind of get through this zoning, and we can go and start from market to the property, to understand how much square footage of restaurant people really want, and then back that into, what are we gonna have to do septic-wise to make it work so that we can get our state of Florida sanitary sewer permit, is a whole bunch of steps. So that's why we've kind of deferred away from the facades now, because as Brad said, twenty-one, seven fifty, we may not get there, so we still don't really know what project we have until we get into the next step. And this step didn't require us to figure out the utilities yet, that comes with the next step, and so we just, that's why we've asked for this one deviation. Next. But there's the architectural intent, and as I've said, we're gonna follow what the town center design guidelines say exactly. Next. So again, our commitment, we meet all the standards from the site plan. We've included all the facade standards from the town center design guidelines in our P U D, so they're already gonna be binding on us if we get your approval. And then what we also included in the P U D was the new town facilities and the breweries. So what you don't really have in the town of Windermere is your own architectural style or some complimentary use, it's kind of, it's just a collective thing that's grown over time, and, which is nice, it's, it's very nice. But we're looking to try to do something that complements the new and ties into the old, and so that's why we included all those things as our commitment to the town, that the architecture will absolutely follow the guidelines, it will actually do something to complement and contribute to the architecture of the whole, as well as just our project. Next. So that's obviously the, the last slide, and if there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Brad. So because this also serves as the first of two public hearings for the community that are required, we will go ahead and have our public hearing portion now, and that will give everyone the opportunity if their desires to comment. After that point, we'll close that public hearing. after that point, we'll close that public hearing, have a conversation with council and we'll bring up any of the presenters that we would like to ask questions to at that point as well as anybody else that we might want to ask questions to. How's that sound? I don't hear any objections, so we'll close our town council meeting at 7:29 PM. And we will open a public hearing for ordinance number 2021-01. This is an ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to rezoning, amending the town of Windermere zoning map for 2.17 acres, more or less of real property located within the Town Center District Overlay at the northeast corner of Main Street and East Sixth Avenue. As more specifically described herein from commercial and residential zoning to planned unit development, providing for applicability, separability, conflicts, codification, and effective when we begin our hearing at 7:30 PM. At this point, anyone, we will begin, of course, with those individuals who've signed up. And we'll begin with Susan Carter and then Brandon Haynes and then anyone else who wishes to make any public comment.
May I reiterate that one comment that was submitted via email prior to tonight's meeting?
That's fine. Susan, do you mind if you read that into the record or if you don't?
This is from Jason Rollins. As the newest resident in Windermere, I am excited to see improvements I can bring and improved use of our town for all residents. Even though the proposed plan is still early in discussion and approval, as a resident, I'm excited to see the improvements here that will lead to better parking, access, and safety for those utilizing businesses. In addition, the ability to have a bit more diverse range of businesses in town is always welcome. In regards to the fast food, not being permitted, I think this should be clarified, striking the words "fast food" and only listing drive-through windows are not allowed. I hate to see someone challenge our existing business under a fast food clause. The other suggestion I have is to better incorporate the existing sidewalks and plant areas so the town maintenance and improvements can be done on the same timeframe. In all, I look forward to seeing the continued managed growth and revitalization of our town, keeping the classic small-town look but updating it for coming years. Jason Rollins, One First Court, Windermere, Florida, 346A7.
Thank you, Robert. Susan, if you'd like to come forward and make your comments. Susan is also our chair of the tree board.
Susan Carter, 106 Palm Street. I'm not yet repeating the tree survey, so just speaking to what I know and what's been presented at this time. As far as the trees go, Joe Sandman has a outstanding reputation. I'm grateful that you brought him on as consultant and to create a tree survey. My question is, the town has gone in great lengths to preserve the oats in front of the new town facilities, including protection zones for roots, additional water to them while they are stressed with construction. Root breeding is required and replacing a weighing nutritional system to greater support these old trees as the construction ramen damages the roots. Do you plan to keep Joe Sandman on as consultant during the construction to oversee such measures? Do you have specific plans for these measures to protect the trees?
Yeah, Joe Sandman is, he's a great one. He's a very, fun person to be around and his knowledge is rad. When we do the final development plan, some of your land development code requirements for how you build a parking lot are anti-tree. You don't have to have curves around all the islands and wanting all the parking area to be paved with, knowing there's generally, it used to be a landscape, that, and then talking to Joe, what you want is the root zone to be able to breathe air and give water around it. So the idea that you build curves and put down impervious surface is not good for preserving particularly older trees. So when we get into the final development plan, there will probably be some discussion with your staff and with y'all on maybe the parking lot is a little bit different, but it doesn't have the deep curve. It does have some impervious pavers or some type of impervious parking pavement so that the trees get the air and the water that they need to have to survive. So, Joe, just a note.
I'll make a quick note here at this point. Thank you, Mr. Hall, thank you, Susan. As part of the final development plan, council does have the leeway and flexibility to amend some of those requirements in deference to the trees. Keep in the back of your head that obviously we may need to discuss further. Next up, I believe it was Brandon Haynes.
Brandon Haynes, 125 Oakdale Street. I echo her concerns regarding the trees. In terms of the trees, my one concern would be that it permeable, especially in the front. I mean, I wasn't aware that our comprehensive plan or the one you presented requires so much paving in front of the store, but it is nicely landscaped there now around the trees. And then we'd like to see some of that remain rather than it just all turning into pavers, whether the permeable or not. It's still nice to see some landscaping around the base of the trees as well. My other concerns are pedestrian safety and traffic. In terms of pedestrian safety, we live in the southeast quadrant of town. And in order for us to go to Central Park Playground, we currently have to come up Oakdale, out to Main Street, up to 6, and we cross right there by the Susan Carter Realty office. We have a hard enough time crossing now. I know some things are planned for pedestrian traffic, but generally speaking, behind the office there, there's rarely more than 10 cars if you're lucky. So when we do cross the street, we have had problems with oncoming traffic from both directions. But if you have 88 parking spots behind there and people exiting, I have concerns about crossing there because they're going to be busy looking to the left to see if someone's turning into the plaza. And the moment they get that break, they're going to go. And I feel like if that's sort of a crossing, that's an issue. And it's a double-edged sword because I see that the exit on the fifth street side is going to be two-directional. And again, in order to get to that playground, either we have to go down to Oakdale Street and ride on the road and what we typically do is run along the front of the buildings. We cut down through that little oval park and over to the playground. And now you're going to have pedestrian issues there. And we're not the only ones that use it. I see tons of people that come to our library, the mom groups, a lot of them leave from the library and they walk over there. So I have concerns about the fifth side and making sure that we're looking at pedestrians and the safety for pedestrians at the fifth street as well. Because that is a very popular path to that playground for people in town. And then my last concern is traffic. I see that the turn lane is, I don't know what that is, maybe 60 feet or something because it's only on half the block. Am I correct on understanding that? So I feel like it's still going to back up traffic even more and I feel like it's going to force traffic up or down Oakdale where I can only, yeah, because it's just one more thing at the corner that, you know, it's going to have a lot of traffic. So I already have my issues with traffic on Oakdale Street. And one last question is to Dr. Cornelius. I would like him to answer officially for the record from what a traditional paver's permeability levels are considered versus permeable, truly permeable surface or permeable pavers. Because a standard paver, a lot of people think, and you've had discussions with me before on this, I just can't remember the numbers, that the pavers themselves aren't really like, oh, it's 30% in permeus, 60%, whatever. It's actually not that great of a permeability. You know what I mean?
First, for the right turn lane, I do just want to make it clear to everyone, that is just a concept. That is not a designed engineered turn lane. That's just showing intent. The final development plan is going to be designed, it'll be engineered, it'll meet standards to show that it's all proper. So, you know, the picture on the development, a public development is just the concept. So, yeah, when you look at it there, it looks kind of weird. It doesn't look like it'll work because it's not, it was drawn by our, you know, my, or the combine engineer. So it will be engineered, it'll be all engineered standards, the safety standards. And the town's coming more, we'll review it to ensure that. In terms of this change, question about the permeability on pavers. What the code says is when people use pavers as part of their landscape, it provides the option where they can be looked at as partially impervious. And it gives deference to the engineer. So like our engineer looks at the residential. If a paver's put on natural grade without any sublayer, generally we would accept it as 60%. That's a kind of a standard to accept. And then so meaning it's 40% impervious, 60% impervious, 30% impervious. And that's just kind of the standard. But we don't really ever see that. You know, usually these pavers are going on crushed concrete on a face. So typically with that, we do require an engineer certification to document what the real permeability is. Because as you know, some of those crushed bases are not more than concrete or asphalt the way this is made to be pressed. So that's how it's addressed. So if they were to use a permeable surface as part of this project, that is very much encouraged. We would just have an engineer certification that documents that that is correct. That is what it is, shows the filtration rates, it is considered impervious, and also as a consultant, it properly is respected and maintained.
Mr. Cornelius, is it, isn't a requirement that our parking is paved?
Honestly, I don't recall seeing that specifically called out. And as you said, Mayor, you as the council through that final development plan can condition it this way as well. You have that option to make that parking lot be the best way it can be to protect the trees the best that you can.
Correct. So you, the town- That I was certain of, I just wasn't 100% certain.
I would, I would double-check that.
Hey, we can double-check that and get back to everybody.
Right, since we don't have much construction development in the town, we will have-
Right. Oh, I'm assuming that the other parking places that we have developed recently, most of those are impervious and well buffered. So we're just trying to figure out, that would be good. And just a small point of order, so when, and you know, we try to be casual here, but when you speak, if you have a question for any of the staff or anything, please address that to council, council will address that to the appropriate staff. Just keep our performance as clean as we can here, thank you. Any further comment from anyone here? All right, seeing none, we'll close our public hearing at 7:41 PM and reopen our town council meeting at the same time, 7:41 PM. Council, this is your opportunity to either get questions answered, ask another question. Remember that we're not going to vote tonight on this item. We're going to use, we can have that opportunity to get any answers that we have. Also, if there's things that are important to you that you, that your feelings are not addressed, this might be a good opportunity to put those ideas out there to individuals who have the ability to make those tweaks and changes and begin to consider this. So seeing that, who would like to begin? I see Councilman Martini raises his hand and then we'll go to Councilperson Gavin.
Did you not get the email about the pink shirts, Mayor?
No, I missed that one, I'm checking that. Thanks for leaving me out, guys, sorry.
Thank you all for the presentations and very thorough, I appreciate that. Robert, I have a question. I know that one of the big issues the residents have is with the increased square footage that this project will bring. I'm not sure what the net square footage is going to be to the town. I know that, well, I'm wondering how much commercial square footage did we lose when we took down the old facilities? You know, the dance studio, the realty that was there, the other businesses. Do you have a ballpark on that?
My ballpark would maybe be at around 3,000 square feet. But more than that?
About 4,000.
I think around 4. Yeah, the realty office and the, Elizabeth Parsons were the biggest two renters. And then you just have a small office for field alterations. And then Windermere Council.
So you have 4,200 square feet, Robert?
4,200 square feet.
Okay. And of course, the impact of those businesses is gone also as far as the daily trips go. Especially the dance studio, I know it had quite a large following and there's a lot of trips involved with that particular business. I'm just trying to look at, you know, the big picture, the net gain for the town. It seems like a lot at 11,000 feet, but the reality of it is, maybe it's not going to be as much of an impact as, you know, as it could be if those businesses were still there. I do have some questions about the, I don't think the question that Susan Carter asked was answered. Mr. Hall, if you could address that about whether we're going to have an arborist on staff or on retainers throughout the entire project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brad, how is the maximum of 21,750 feet to turn?
It was determined based on the request submitted by the HAB. So when we add up his square footage of his uses, proposed uses, that comes up to 21,750. His building footprint's at roughly 21,750. That's, that's how that number was calculated. And I will just, to make it clear, because I was, Martini, you were at the D R B meeting. At the D R B meeting, we did have conflicting numbers for the square footage and that was discussed quite a bit at the development review board meeting. But after the D R B meeting, the applicant made those revisions to the plan to eliminate those discrepancies that we had. At D R B, we had one number on the building, we had another number in the table, we had another number over there. So we had discrepancies in our numbers that were there. But at the development review board meeting, the applicant committed that it was 21,750 and that he has updated the plan and actually provided a more detailed plan for your consideration if you would go back and, and I can provide this to the council, which the plan that was at the D R B development review board was basically hands-off. It wasn't as clean as this one is. So now our parking, the fact that we had issues with parking spaces being kind of mismatched, all those issues that we had in the development review board have all been resolved with the revised plan that has been submitted to the town council.
And I think the original request was for 26,000 square feet?
At the, at the very beginning, at the very beginning, back in two years ago, two years ago, their initial request was actually a third building, which would have been on the Oakdale side. That was their initial request to the town. And they also were proposing comprehensive plan and that is the initial request back in 2019. We, and that was where a lot of discussion happened over that year about that because that was non-compliant, that was not compliant with the master plan. And that was a great concern. We as staff couldn't support that because it would have been compliant. But through the discussion, through the many revisions, and Mr. Hall will tell you, we had many planned revisions for this project. They dropped that third building, they dropped that request and did everything else fully compliant or proposing to fully comply with the Town Center Design Guidelines. So yes, initially it was 26,000, we had a third building, but that had been removed and no longer part of the project.
Okay, thank you, Brad. The applicants, I think, I would like to suggest that you have a meeting with the tree board before the next town council meeting. Susan Carter, at least, and maybe the arborists, to meet with the applicants and go walk the property so they have a better understanding of what we're looking at as far as trees go. And obviously, you know, we are going to lose the trees. There's no way to keep them all. But I want you guys to be aware of their feelings towards this project. And the more we discuss with them, the more comfortable they'll be with the changes that you're asking for. So I would suggest to contact Susan Carter and get a meeting set up with the tree board. I would also like to see a design concept layout, I mentioned this before, showing the dry stormwater storage as a linear pond that runs along Oakdale Street. I'd like to see that before the next meeting. Doesn't need to be, you know, fancy, be a sketch, but just something that for the benefit of the residents on Oakdale Street, if that is indeed an option, I would like to see that in a drawing, please. if that is indeed an option, I would like to see that in a drawing place. And Robert, lastly, are we planning a workshop in between now and the next town council meeting?
No, there's no workshop that's planned in between now and the next town council meeting. But as part of the PUD requirement, they have to do three public meetings prior to the final development plan being brought up. So technically, the public has six more bites of the sapple as far as the development of this project.
Reason I'm asking is because a lot of the information we got tonight is new. This is not information that was at the DRB, not information that was available at the previous workshop. So quite a bit of time needs to be now in the next town council meeting. Might want to consider.
I have no problem doing that. Would it be a formal workshop or just a public workshop?
Yeah, just public.
Okay.
So we do this, so they'll have another seven, eight opportunities for the public to put seven. Use this for five.
This next decision.
And their opportunities as well.
Yeah, this first decision is going to get this fall rolling. So I suppose I want to make sure as many people as possible are comfortable from the outset. Because you know how it goes.
I do, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Even more, we can do, I mean, I, I look at it too. We're moving down this road and we're well ahead of where we have started. It's an underpick project, so we'll deal with that. We are continuing to learn as we go, changing information on a better format. But obviously, we have to continue to do everything we can to make sure that we guys, as much input as possible. I believe I can, I promise that Councilperson Dowd.
So I'm just, little unclear how this, this action affects the zoning of the area. So is it currently zoned at the appropriate zoning criteria for the development? Or does this action change the zoning of the area?
The current zone, oh, I'll start at the beginning of this one. So yeah, the current zoning on the property hasn't existed. It is there. So the property currently has a future land use classification and zoning of commercial on the lots in front of Main Street within the town center overlay district. So it's important that's included because the town center overlay is part of the comprehensive plan designation for the property as well as the zoning designation. The lots on the back side along Oakdale have a residential future land use and residential zoning, but are also identified within the future land use and zoning within the town center overlay. So the way they are currently zoned still requires those properties to be developed consistent with the master, town center master plan. Somebody could not come into us and pull a permit to put a single family home on those lots on Oakdale. Because the comprehensive plan says those lots can only be developed consistent with the master plan. The master plan says those lots can only be used for parking for the redevelopment property. So why we have the rezoning now, and it's unfortunate I have to call it rezoning, but I do because technically that is what it is. We have to rezone it to assign the plan unit development zoning district within the land development code to implement now that master plan. So the rezoning component that you have conceived in is the vehicle to implement the master plan. But that master plan allows for this to happen because it's already in place. This is now what allows it to get implemented is this rezon. I'll take my next question.
Kind of. So I, I understand. So this action will rezone the area, but it will have been rezoned at another time. If this, if this development didn't take place, whatever development did take place would drive the rezoning.
Right, any development, correct. Any development that would occur on that property would require that property to be rezoned.
Okay. So it isn't specifically this action that it doesn't, it's an initiator of that.
Right, right. So when, when this, this requirement was put in place, it was way back in two thousand and four, two thousand and six, with the adoption of the master plan in two thousand and four. Then the amendment of the town plan development code and conference plan, which now apply that master plan to these properties. So, so what you said is absolutely correct.
Got it, okay. Second question regards to traffic. You noted in your presentation that the average peak hour rate changed, it's twenty-seven trips. That twenty-seven trips is on a, what's the existing peak hour amount? So it's twenty-seven trips, but what?
Yeah, and actually that average is just between your AM and PM. So quite honestly, I would use that number.
So I guess, you know, just to kind of clarify the impact, I want to see what the AMP peak hour change is, the PM peak hour change as a percentage of the existing traffic counts.
And we can ask, with Kevin Moore, he can address that. He's the, for Kevin Moore, he's the traffic engineer that actually reviewed the traffic. Unfortunately, it's easy.
Yeah, I forgot it.
I, I could check and see if I have any of my files, or I could give you my best guess right now.
Let's defer to the next workshop and really take a look at the impact of traffic, not just the change in the net peak hour trips versus, you know, it truly is a percentage delta that is the factor. If it's twenty-seven on twenty-seven trips of peak hour, that's a hundred percent in fact, right? If it's a two percent impact, it's much different than, you know, a larger change. So if you deal that back a little bit more, that'd be great.
Right, right. What I would suggest is we don't look at the average, that's just average you can have. But Mr. Wood has been doing is he can look at the average of, what the percentage of the PM BP is and what the percentage of the AM. Well, that's the deal on the.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilperson Dowd. Excellent question. Councilperson Martini, I wanted to make a clarification on the order, just so we all know exactly what I think you're asking for. And that is that you want to maximize the buffer between Oakdale and the parking lot via, or potentially via the retention pond, a longer, a longer room rather than a square.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure everybody got that, but I just want to make sure that everybody just wants to work on the same topic. Yes, instead of having the water retention concentration in the east corner, just have it extended as linear pond along the whole Oakdale, most of the Oakdale, most of the Oakdale perimeter. Basically to give the perception to the, almost on Oakdale, that there's, not only just a perception, but actual more space.
Right.
For them to have to hear the cars, to see the lights, et cetera. So to make that buffer as large as humanly possible to get, you know, to get all the, you know, the criteria for it.
Just that.
Okay, okay. Councilperson Dowd.
I'll stop.
No, just to make me that call, is that really going to be possible against the full site? I don't know. I think you're conceptualizing a possibility that isn't, that hasn't been conceptualized there. And of course, the numbers are still going to be the numbers in terms of what you're able to do with that space.
I guess what I'm getting at is you put a concept out, a linear pond, and then all cycles done is impossible. And then you said expectations of.
Well, I checked, and I was told that it is possible. And so if it is possible, I would like to see a concept that goes along with that. That is not possible for some reason. I don't see why it would be. And obviously, you can't, you know, I don't want to be showing that to the residents, but the residents are asking me if there's any way to make that buffer wider. You know, they have issues with us rezoning the property across the street from their house. And therefore, if there is an option, make that bigger. Why not?
Well, we will look at it, okay? Then, from the comprehensive plan standpoint, this is what we have to do. The comprehensive plan is we have to have plenty of buffer, which we provide. We'll look at it, but I think as we talked about at the workshop or an earlier hearing, by putting a stormwater in there, right now, it would be planted up. And you have the plants that you see that thrive in the near, probably mostly azaleas and, and different ground covers and trees would go in there. When you make it into a storm pond, you don't put any plants in. Because there's very, very few plants that can take the inundation in the summer where you get rains every day. Now, it's going to be dry and there'll be mowed, there'll be grass. But the water goes up and down every day. So when you put plants in there, all you're going to have is a little bit wider grass. No one's going to see any lights because there's a six-foot wall. And the sound from a six-foot wall should also go to help attenuate. And there's probably nine heritage hogs along Oakdale that will all be preserved by doing this. So we will look at it. I don't know, the, the way it's drawn, I think is the better alternative than trying to do this longer pond. Can we draw it? Yes, we'll draw it. Can we balance everything back? Sure. I'll balance this thing fifty-seven times, so times are right. We will provide that, oops, sorry, we'll provide that for you. But again, those are just my concerns, particularly, you know, we don't have a landscape architecture yet. Run this by hand, and it's the same concerns. But we'll do that.
Thank you, Jim. I'm not asking for the dry stormwater to be landscaped itself. I'm asking for it to be reconfigured so that it runs in a long rectangle along the length of Oakdale. I understand that you don't want to put plants in, in the dry stormwater retention area.
But then for y'all, there's going to be a vote. The guidelines show that it really should be this planted up lush area that doesn't just look like grass in a storm pond. When you look at what the town center guidelines put out, it was planted up with a wall. So if you go the other direction, if that's your purpose, that's okay. But it will be a little bit of a step away from what's approved. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Fair enough. And I think that, you know, I think what we're looking for is the opportunity to expand that offer to the maximum for those residents on Oakdale. And I think that's where you're going to hear the most pushback as well. Now, we'll look at the landscape plan as well very closely. And I think that, you know, the way I read it, the majority of the landscape plan is to be on the exterior of the wall. Right, correct? Maybe trying to pay attention. Brad, do you have a comment on that?
No, nobody does. I don't think I can.
I see you with your, Jim, give me one second. Let me get, let me get to a couple of these guys, and then we'll circle back.
I have a comment on this, talking about buffers. They still have to bring in the septic and the drainage field. More opportunities to create more buffer from the residents, not just stormwater. One, those do have to be separated anyways, so they're going to run into those kinds of calculations. It may change quite a bit, just from my experience dealing with health park. Dixie Creek, it's a huge system, takes up a lot of space. There's, there's other options besides just, okay, we're going to put a pond there. So just with the idea of looking for other ways to buffer it.
So we'll keep it in mind on that, and hope for, again, we're just looking for the.
I was going to say.
Councilperson Dowd, that's not even.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, this is going to be an iterative process as we, as we go through the development. As you pointed out, there's going to be puts and takes for septic system, the stormwater, parking space, square footage of whatever use it is, whether it's a restaurant, retail, office space. All of those are going to be developed as we go through the, the final development plan. And I think that's why when we had the workshop, I wanted to see an incremental design review so we could see what those development strategies are and kind of have some input at that point versus right at the end getting the point.
Agreed. And I think that, you know, part of that is we have to make sure that everyone understands that we're going to seize those moments, we're going to have that opportunity to do that. We're not going to let it, it doesn't just run, you know? So we're going to have those opportunities. I think we, you know, I'm pretty proud of some of the things that the council has done and staff has done and with it, to give us some improved buffers and make some decisions. But I think that we, you know, certainly going to have an opportunity to put a stamp on this that'll, that'll, that'll help the process as well. Mr. Carr, I saw you, you come up, and for the record, name and address.
Jim Carr.
Where was it?
West Lake other road, field box one thirty-five, Denver. All of these are good points, and I think we all need to understand that that site plan probably don't change a lot. And I think, again, they need to understand that the east, two-thirds of it is parking retention, drainage, you know, all those other things, buffer, and the property along Main Street is where the commercial buildings can be built. You know, Mr. Martini's suggestion may work, but it may not. It may create inefficiencies and other things that we can't do. So I just, and, and more of a question on that, if you did try to do a linear pond, is the linear pond inside the wall or outside the wall? Because if it's inside the wall, it's really not giving the effect that you're looking for. So I think that's something we need to think about as well. So, you know, we're open to discussion, but I think we're going to see a lot of changes. This is like a footprint, and that's why we didn't want to get into so much detail upfront. This is preliminary planning, thirty, sixty, ninety. You know, we, we definitely, we, in an interim, try to figure out, you know, we make the progress with the changes to be made. So the only thing I don't want to see us do is have twenty meetings and, you know, never get anything done. You know, it's like a management project. I look forward to working with everybody, and I know it's not going to look exactly like that. I think we'll all.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your input as well. Council, any further questions, comments, concerns, direction? I have just a few quick items. No, Chris, you go ahead, sir.
Just trying to give a better understanding of what the transportation mitigation would look like. I wasn't part of the Estancia, but obviously fifty-one units and, you know, fairly large impact to the roads and such. So what's, you know, what's, what would be the formula for that?
It was seventy.
I'll do it if I say wrong.
He's very careful how we describe it because of new legislation that's been passed since Estancia. You know, with Estancia, you know, since you really don't have a lot of new development. In order for us to establish an impact fee, we had to do an impact study. And that pretty much, the costs outweighed what revenue would be brought in from those traffic impact fees. So what we did was we just utilized the PUD process that they would agree to the amount that's equal to what Orange County uses for a single-family home for a transportation impact. So with this, it's a different type of negotiation. I'll let Brad answer that.
So with this, we don't have the methodology decided yet. That would be something that would be negotiated as part of that agreement. But I can say in part of my discussion with the applicant about that condition is, you know, my, I may get evilized from our commentary, would be more like a proportionate allocation of costs. Because the way that, that condition is, we're going to look at, you know, potential improvements around it out, potential pedestrian improvement to that intersection. And so the way we would potentially look at that is, you know, what is that proportionate responsibility for their traffic, their new traffic coming into this project? They're not going to pay the entire improvement because improvement's not needed because of them. It's an existing issue. But so what is their share? So that's something that would be negotiated as we go through the final development plan, you know, working through staff, working through council of that. So but standing here today, I can't tell you this would be the methodology. It's something we have to work and negotiate with the applicant and the town council.
I think you started to answer a follow-up question about what point did this negotiations start, you know, there's?
As soon as, and my thought process of this is, once we have a solid development plan where we know this is. where we know this is what it's going to be, right now, we have a concept. But once we, you know, they have a solid development and this building is going to be X minus square feet now, this would be that, this would be that, we would have them rerun some trip generation rates on it to look at how that would fit into the overall traffic impact. So it's basically, my thought would be in terms of our three workshops, that would probably be the discussion for the town council, probably then for that second workshop would be my guess. So it'd be well before it comes to the here. We would have those discussions, or council would be having those discussions with that. We hold it until the end.
So the other open-ended section was an impact fee, I guess, the source, or something like that, for the PD. How, I guess, how about...
I can tell you that is one condition, and I don't think that will be upset, I'll say this, they may ask to be removed. So we, the way, and I would say where that came from, that was actually a condition in a previous development agreement that Mr. Wilks had written, and I carried that forward for this property. The way it's currently written in there is basically at the discretion of the police chief and the town manager, whether they need to pay someone. And of course, the applicant is concerned about that, which I can understand.
Is there a precedent or something that makes your decision about what you're thinking? I understand the intent, but...
I think the intent is for larger developments, especially when this was drafted in two thousand and four. I think the overall development impact, all at once, would have possibly created an issue with the police force at the time. With this development, with an incremental increase of eleven thousand square feet with the majority of the main office, I don't believe that there would be a need for additional officer service or additional equipment for this...
So is this a purpose of traffic control or just onsite security or...
It's more related to general law enforcement support, the idea of more activity, more enforcement activities. So it's more just that increased number of people in the narrative. But as Mr. Smith said, I think this was also drafted in a much larger component.
And I think in two thousand and four, what was being discussed was immensely different in terms of, you know, just use and space and who you were trying to attract and all of that. So, you know, that's my assumption. I wasn't here in two thousand and four, but that's my assumption. That's how we end up here today with an overlay that is pretty much designed to protect against, you know, having that reoccur.
Right. An example would be the growth, you know, if that were to be within the town of Windermere and close to be developed. So that's a whole different story with the amount of square footage, you know, the petty thefts, and you're going to have the alarm checks, the types of businesses that are there. I think this is completely different. I wouldn't have any objection removing that clause from the developer's agreement or the PD. I would prefer with Chief, if you had any additional comments on that, but it's eleven thousand additional square feet, so I really don't see any need for additional police services.
I mean, I think that's, I don't know whether you need to remove it at this point or not. I mean, I think that it's a, it's probably something that's not going to apply here. That would be my gut. But again, you never know what happens in the future. So maybe it's something that continues to live and allows us to monitor. You know, in terms of this particular space and time, I don't see us needing it. Chief, do you feel differently, sir?
No, I don't see it in that, for that small scale, for that small...
I mean, I think that, I mean, I think if we did feel strongly in that direction, we might have some different feelings about where we're headed to. So again, counsel, that's something you guys can mull over and think about until, you know, our second meeting or our second hearing on this, you know, part of it. And then how do you feel about that? Those are my feelings.
It just requires pretty much consultation with us and for us to come up with a cost, and that cost could be zero.
Right. Exactly. That's what I'm saying. It could stay, it could live, but you just don't execute.
Maybe that's secondly my next question, you know, how set in stone is this agreement, or items like that, or, you know, there's some other designs that are set forward that obviously match the, but the other master plan, they follow something to the theme of what the master plan is supposed to be regardless of the dominant. You know, can't we, you know, counsel, kind of bad traffic today? Yeah, that's not, I don't think what they intended, you know, once we enter this, you know, how living and breathing, you know, can this object be...
The conditions you see before your seating, they can be amended all the way up to your final hearing, I don't think. So and what I believe our approach will be is, I know that we will get some ads from the act, and we will provide a strike for non-unchanged documents to the council so you can see the proposed changes, including over hearing and seating from council. And then discuss at your workshop and then decide to approve or not approve on the A. Once that's adopted, if you're the ones to change that, you can. But you have to reopen the ordinance, review the ordinance, and amend the ordinance. So it can be changed.
Two hearings and all that type of...
It's still going to be two hearings, yes, sir. But it is an ordinance, so it has to still go through the two hearings to change.
Yeah, I just, you know, I don't want to, you know, just throw out something, maybe where it has twenty-foot increments, you know, you see a bunch of lines together, and maybe there's a business that, you know, takes up thirty-five feet and being a little odd, half of it's one color and the other half is another.
And I can, that is another, I just have to act it right up and what we, your interview is very much...
I, I, some of this, it's like a look and see, you know? Because we don't have the full plan, we don't have the facade, and you know, like the brewery, you know, everything is here. And I don't mind going around, but I understand, you know, fifteen thousand square feet look a building, maybe look different than it does in twenty-one thousand square feet. You know, so like a little bit of flexibility, it's a hard part, and it's just bad.
For the specifics of that twenty-foot increment, the suspicion I have is, is we may come back with a recommendation, counsel, to change that. Because I think the intent in your master plan is not a hard twenty feet. Not every building is going to be divisible by twenty. That's not a reality. I think the intent of that is you might have a span greater than twenty. So we'll put in that, like, can't be...
Or like seventy percent of glass, I mean, the pictures that were up here, I'm not sure if they were seventy percent glass.
Right. Well, then that's a discussion we can have with council. What you see out here today, none of it is developed under the master plan.
Right. Well, I mean, some of the examples on the master plan, some examples of thoughts and things like that, that, you know, we're going to show them. So I guess if, so if we make any changes, then it's two more hearings.
Yeah, whatever you got, if you got some changes, if you made any change after that, we'll be part of the one.
And I'm not saying whether we should change it or not, it's just, you know, try to make sure we're all part in our hand development necessarily.
And what I can say, what I can say, what I think what the act and some cameras looking at the condition is, how does it apply to this project? Where we're getting the feedback is where things don't mesh. So I think that may be addressed here.
Well, I mean, I think too, we can use an example. And one of the examples is if, you know, say, say it requires eighty parking spaces and there's a beautiful tree that would reduce it by two parking spaces. I think that's well within our purview and the smart thing to do is say, no, we'd rather keep three, and we'll do without two spaces. Now, we can't do without twenty spaces. So, I mean, there's reality up here, you know? So, and I think, and that's what you are all really good about. I mean, you know, we go, I mean, I think we have a good feeling as to where, where there may be an inch, there's no mile anywhere, you know, but there may be an inch here and an inch there that makes sense for the community, makes sense for the development, makes sense for council, makes sense for the developer. And I mean, I think those are the things that Council and PD is trying to get to. And I think you are as well. You know, we don't want to do anything that, you don't want to stick different rules so hard that, you know, something that hated.
You might hear with town facilities, you know, it's rocking important, this is, you know, this is about a busiest corner as the county of the...
Absolutely. Because you can do it once, so we want to do it correct. And that's why, so, I mean, if it takes us, you know, if it takes us an extra reading or two to get to somewhere that makes sense, you know, I'm on it.
I understand, you know, what that process is. I've got one last question to figure that out from that email. Fast food, so is there a definition for fast food? Because I'm not doing code, and it does just say fast food, but, you know, is the ice cream shop a fast food? It's like, oh, this is like so fast food, and just trying to... I would be, what the intent is, you don't want to do that there, you know, just whatever it may be.
And that, that is a good issue to carry forward. I agree with the email. I don't know that specific language is needed. I think the important part is to know drive-throughs, which is not the topic we're proposing anyhow. But I think it's good to have that down.
Because I wouldn't think it would be in this plan, you know, most fast food companies, but they pride off the product, we're going to, I'm not sure if it's a way. I mean, maybe I'm wrong to, you know, to fit a square sort of hole in the town, but I'm just thinking, you know, there miles of the road there, you know, something similar for that, where you walk up to a window or, God, it's a fast food. I mean, I'm sorry, should we say we keep our ice cream shop?
So I see Jim has his hand up, and I, go ahead, Jim. I think I know what you're going to say. I'm hoping that it's the type of place to eat that we all want, where we can sit there perfectly.
It is, but we just got through a pandemic, and if you didn't have pickup, we went out of business. So I'm worried if that shuts people down, so I'm going to be really careful on that. Going back to, you know, the setting, it's supposed to be twenty-three, twenty-five feet. Is there any way to build some ability to have an adjustment, living, moving to the dock? Not that you want, you know, part of life changed at all, but just, it's not vision. And you guys in approval allow that within that approval. So if it became a twenty-three foot building twice, that's not, you know, against the COVID, you're not re-challenged by that. So just a suggestion, I don't know if they really do that.
I don't want to answer for everybody in terms of, you know, I, I think I'll continue to say there's, there's a reasonable group of people in the room, but we don't want to get away too far from the intent of what was overlaid and why it was done.
Yes, I, I would think there would probably be a way to direct me if I'm wrong. You know, we're potentially looking at thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent, whatever that percentage is being created on review. At some point during the review, if it is early thirty percent, we're going to start making comments on the renderings and such. And maybe at that point, we come to an agreement, we can go ahead and, you know, start that process of computering, because it's still going to be, you know, six, twelve lines, that line, whatever it may be before they hit the, you know, the ninety percent or full approvals.
We mean, we mean, in our workshops, but there's benchmarks too. Maybe that's a good way to do it as well, so it's getting a little long.
The thirty, sixty, ninety, it's more of like an engineering type standard, if you like your road jobs and bigger projects. When you're doing this type of project, you probably come in like a ten or fifteen percent so that you have the very early generation of façades and you have the early generation of all this stuff. So you're not already thirty percent in, and then you guys say, whoa, 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 this is no good, you have to move back almost to zero. So really, that first meeting needs to be well before thirty. So I'd just caution, putting thirty, sixty, ninety into it, it really, I don't know how you, you guys still have to figure out how to work, but particularly for the façades and that stuff, it needs to be less than thirty percent that you come in with some concept plans that are still loose and fluid, that then you can continue to fine-tune and refine.
I think too, that, I think we need to be realistic in this, and the biggest player here that is the unknown is your septic and sanitary sewer. So, I mean, that's, that's something that you guys have to work out ASAP. I mean, I think you, so, because we really can't go anywhere without that. And I know, you know, and one of the things, you know, that Robert and I, Brad have talked about is that I also know, I know Windermere, Jim, you do as well. People like to see it. You know, it took us five years to get approval for the town facilities. One of the biggest barriers, in my opinion, looking back, is that we didn't have a really good layout and facade until much later in that process. And when we did, it was a game changer. So that's free knowledge and free advice, I guess. I mean, I just think it's, it's going to be critical. Now, I know you don't really want to do that until you know what your septic and sanitary sewer situation is going to look like, but that is super critical, you know? And I don't think we're going to get too far out of the gate without that.
And the way the condition is proposed on workshops, I did not put a specific threshold when those three would occur. For that exact reason, you know, I think as the project begins to take life, there may be more like the septic, maybe it's more important to have a workshop just on the septic in that location, or just a workshop just on the facade. So it gives the town and the town council the opportunity, you know, if they get to the final development plan process, to now say, these are the midpoints we want to talk to at. At this point, I think it's important just to say, you've got to come back to us at least three more times before you get us, but we'll tell you when those three.
And I think too, as we begin to talk about, you know, like tonight, the package, the septic package that was brought up, you know, that's a little different. So, you know, we're going to want to talk about that as well. I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly what all those look like. But there's, you know, I know there's multiple ways to deal with septic, multiple ways that you're going to have to deal with pre-traction things like that. So let's, you know, let's get on those because I think that's really going to shape the rest. It's my gut feel that, you know, we have a supportive group up here that are interested in doing something really, really nice, just like you guys are with that area. So, but I also know that people here like to see it, and that will help the process tremendously, if not. Jim, go ahead.
I agree completely. And what we really need is a max to start with, and that's what we're looking for. We've done soil tests in the past, you know, we got great soil tests for septic systems. It's a balance. We've got trees, we've got retention, detention, we've got drain fields, we've got parking, we've got buildings. Everybody's got an idea of what they want most or what's most important, so it's going to be balanced now. So we've got to get started somewhere, and that's why we need approval for twenty-one, seven, fifty, and then let's get to work.
All right. So on the workshops, I mean, can we just be fair upon it? I mean, it's going to be kind of up to the asset, you know, how far they want, because there's going to be a risk. If they're too far, let's say you go to scale of the map or do something else, and, you know, that's wasted money, but maybe, you know, I don't see X amount of workshops in between, you know.
So, Chris, you know, we're going to have a minimum of three workshops. But I mean, I have no issue if council agrees with saying, you know, Robert, the developer, and Brad can work together, and when there's, when there's significant development, you know, like when we got the sewer worked out, I think that's a good time. We should probably all work together. The next one, maybe, you know, I think we all know, you know, I trust these guys to know that when they, they see it, right? I mean, you're like, okay, people are going to want to talk about this. I mean, that's the one, you know, we all know that. So, I mean, if that's reasonable and fair, council agrees, I think that would be council's direction as well.
Mayor, I did think about that. I had an idea on that same thought, is, you know, what I think, in my mind is, the three could be the septic, so that's a huge issue. That's one workshop. Faisade, second workshop. Third workshop is buffering and landscaping, you can choose.
Those are the three big hot items. And I would like to access this part probably, but respectfully, you can't separate them.
I'm not asking them to be clinically separated.
Changes everything else, and whatever you do for the stormwater and the landscaping changes everything that's, you can't, that's not the way it works. You can't pigeonhole it. It's a big thing that you're trying to get your arms around, hopefully we can squeeze it and all hug it.
I understand. I'm not asking it to be clinically separated, right? But I'm just telling you guys that, I don't know a lot, but I know that this is, this is a moment that you guys should probably seize and do whatever you can and bring us the best that you possibly can so we can make really strong, good decisions. That's all we're asked. It's all we're asked. Um, you know, I'm not asking for everything to be in a boat. I'm not, I mean, we're, we're all realists up here. We all work for a living, we know how it goes. But, uh, you know, we also can't leave it all to the last minute and just throw the dice. That's not gonna work for us. Jim, one last time.
One last one, because we're glad you could go there or?
Yes, please. So that way, otherwise Dorothy won't be able to hear your comments and I might not be able to.
Going back to, I mean, maybe we don't need to name a percentage or whatever where it is at certain point in time, but can we say it'll be out of three workshops at appropriate times, as scheduled by your destiny, whether that is, so we're not having by 20, if you ever, you know, we're never getting approval, we get done. So like a title, it makes us do a bit more hard work and we're just not messing around. But with what Jim said, there's a lot of things that we have in each supplemental, so we can't just fit one. So, but if we can limit it to three, that'd be awesome.
Three is, I think, what we agreed upon and councilperson makes up. Oh, I just.
Three is what he's standing on.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that. So, you know, you, so Brad, Robert, Jim, you guys have figured out when the time is right and, um, and we'll be here waiting. So I'm good. Any further counsel on this one? All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I think we made a lot of progress.
Appreciate your time and all your input. Thank you.
All right, you gotta stay for the rest. Right. So we'll now move to item forms, consent to agenda items. Um, we don't have anything there. So under new business, we have our minutes, the council, it's town council meeting minutes March 23rd, uh, 2021. And there is.
The only amendment that we would suggest is amending the attached swearing-in forms. So, because right now they have been starting, uh, two council members starting at, um, 2019 to 2021 as far as the, uh, the dates, so we need to correct those dates and actually correct, uh, swearing-in affidavits.
Do you need a motion for that? Robert, is that something?
Just, I would say yes, make a motion to approve both of the minutes as written with that. One added thing is to correct the, um, swearing-in affidavits.
I'm motion to accept the minutes with the two, right? Okay. Make your decision, David. Uh, second, councilperson Williams, any comment, counsel? Dorothy, does that give you what you need?
Sorry?
Will that give you what you need for the amendment?
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure.
All right, begin voting with councilperson Dable.
Aye.
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 Motion to agree. Yes, thank you, counsel. We've got both minutes, right? Just wanted to make sure. Uh, I want to be as resolution ordinances for approval first reading. This is resolution number 2021 dash 02. This is a not to exceed $25,000 for Windermere PD vehicle number 46 purchase. Uh, this is a resolution of the town of Windermere, Orange County, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a note, the amount not to exceed $25,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of purchasing a public safety vehicle and cost of issuance of such, delegating to the town manager of the town, subject to compliance to the applicable provisions hereof, the authority to award the sale of such note to Sanovia's bank pursuant to a term sheet authorizing the execution of a business loan agreement and promissory note making certain findings authorizing certain officials of the town and others to take all actions required in connection with issuance, sale and delivery of said note and providing for an effective date.
This is something that wouldn't need a vote, um, because it is for the purchase of a new vehicle and it's a new requirement by the, uh, Sanovas banks. Uh, whenever we take out a new note, we have to go through a resolution process. This is for a new SRO vehicle. Uh, the reason why is because the old one has broken down and is down there.
Thank you, Robert. Do you have anything to answer?
Yeah, uh, Mercury's Hall has the last few ones of vehicles with two blown up. Uh, this vehicle that is replaced has a 2010 Ford Explorer. In 2014, the town council voted for us to get rid of all the old gray vehicles. That's the last gray vehicle, so I think we've done pretty well considering 2014. Uh, but we're very shorthanded. Uh, but we chose to do since it's an SRO vehicle is actually just due to a Ford Fusion, which is a minimal impact, as minimal as it came to our budget. It's a typical new vehicle now. It's probably about $47,000 to lay back this, so we went with a lesser option. It's an SRO vehicle, felt like, um, this wasn't in budget, it was an emergency item, so we're trying to be as discreet as possible for the end of that. But we were put in that position and then last night I got called about it on that. We really, we really just got here for some reason.
Yeah, I appreciate your discretion on that. Um, okay, I'll, uh, I'll chime in for counsel to make a motion to approve. Motion to approve. All right, the second, second, councilperson Zapp. And any further discussion, counsel? Robert, is this a, uh, is this a, a solid payment for the amortization schedule? Is this a once a year payment? Or is it?
For the amortization, I'd have to look at it. I believe it's a once a year payment for five years.
Do we not have to pay it till next year?
No, we start paying, I believe, this year.
Okay.
Uh, the check again, the amortization.
I thought the first payment was due next year according to, uh, schedule.
I don't think we got it.
I didn't see it. I think it's 2.4%. Yeah, it's almost free money. And if, you know, if we don't have to pay for it till next year, then we might as well get two of them. No.
Me neither.
I'm all scared of that. Or one real car. Jason, good drive? Okay. All right, counsel, any additional questions and will councilperson Martini's question answered? Yes. Oh, sorry. That's the problem. You're down there and I have my sunglasses on, we're just.
I'll, I'll get my hands.
Sorry.
So in light of the, uh, recent breakdowns of other vehicles, is it still a low prudence approach?
It is. Again, being an SR vehicle, there's, there's not a need for a full control vehicle. And right now, it's a sunside tour, so we're just gonna have to see. If that's, and that is a 2014 vehicle, 100,000 miles, so we can usually get a couple more on the record side of that.
And all of our other vehicles, I mean, we're gonna be replacing this in thousands eventually, I'm sure we'll put this in there.
I'll take a pledge, I don't.
Oh, they're all, both of them are on?
Councilmember Martini, the first payment is April 20th.
Yeah, I'm just gonna add that right now. And it's five payments and it would start on April 19th of 2022.
Okay, thank you. All right. Further discussion, counsel? Begin voting, councilperson Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's a new period. We have a, item C, this is an appointment for panel, wait, for my shirt?
Twenty-four.
Close, something?
You're close.
Um, for Windermere Tree Board, uh, this is for, uh, for approval. We have a motion to approve?
Say yes.
Don't make a motion to approve. Motion to approve, councilperson Zapp. If we have a second, I'll second. Second, councilperson Martini. Any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none, begin voting, councilperson David. Aye.
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 Aye. And, of course, William, folks, can you affirm it from the back?
Yep. Um, next up is our town council liaison assignments. Since, so since he's indisposed, I can put him anywhere. That'll teach him. I think Frank. It's a great, I don't know. You know, always.
It's hard, never.
We're supposed to be a nice school, not metal. But it's, all right, guys, I've done my best with this. Um, thank you for all of your input. Some of you put numbers, some of you put X's, some of you put blanks. You know, so, right. But I, you know, fortunately, I feel like I know you guys pretty well, like, I have everybody in a place that you're gonna like, um, or a place that you'll understand that you're certainly needed. Um, if you have any big objections, let me know before we make the final decision here today. We'll start off with, uh, DRB, uh, like councilperson Martini, to, uh, continue this work there. Um, I'm gonna ask, uh, councilperson David to work on downtown business. Uh, Ms. David, uh, for food trucks and farmer's market. Elder committee, councilperson Williams. Historical board, councilperson Williams. Long-range planning, councilperson David. Parks and Rec, uh, councilperson David. Uh, tree board, councilperson Martini. We're giving all the creative joking on, perfect. Um, chamber alternate, uh, councilperson Zapp, he's already doing some great work with the chamber. Metro plan alternate, uh, councilperson David. Ways committee, uh, councilperson David. Um, holiday social, and this does not just have to be one, um, but I know that councilperson Williams runs in the circles of the folks that are generally doing the work there, so that'll be a match for you. Street and roads, uh, councilperson David. And then, and also I believe includes buildings and grounds. Uh, parks and rec, we already have, uh, councilperson David. Budget finance, councilperson Williams. Police, councilperson Martini. And inhabitant, uh, councilperson Zapp. Uh, and then, um, I'm going to ask that council approve, um, councilperson Zapp as mayor pro temp. Anyone throwing anything at me yet? That's a good sign. You good? Chris, you good? Yep. Councilperson David, are you good?
I'm good.
We might have to use those last match issue I listed. Uh, councilperson David, you good? And councilperson Williams? Councilperson Martini?
Good.
All right, comes up from everybody. Uh, certainly appreciate everybody's help, uh, and on this very important basis. So we will, let's see, we'll make a motion to approve those and then I'll provide you with the list or the record.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to approve? Motion to approve. So I motion approved, councilperson Zapp, second, councilperson David, any discussion, counsel? Begin voting, councilperson Martini. Aye.
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 Aye. Officially done it to yourself. Do we need a? So for mayor pro temp, do we need a, a separate last one?
We did it separately, but since we did the whole liaison course, we have.
Okay.
We did, next time, I'm coming.
We're moving to contracts and agreements. Um, I believe we have our, um, so I think this is gonna be a bit of a tag team. We have our engineering team here, um, as well as, uh, all of our, our homeworks and other staff. So, Robert, LA, you're gonna track this one up as we go, sir.
Okay, IPO, the first one, um, under D1, that is for the, um, paving of Old Dirt Main. As you know, the town council previously approved paving of Old Dirt Main from West Second Avenue over St. Canaveral, um, and following in line with what we're doing with every other project, now we're incorporating the actual design of the potable water system with all of these projects. Uh, so this is just adding that to that IPO. So it's just adding potable water construction or design to, uh, this project.
Thank you, Robert. Counsel, any questions or comments on this particular item? This is, again, part of our ongoing efforts to get potable water to the entire town. Questions, comments, concerns?
This is, uh, this is paving, uh, it's what I'm, so this is paving Old Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, IPO number 115, paving Old Main Street, and that goes to the bridge to.
To West Second Avenue, yes, sir.
And, and a question about that and also just in general, these IPOs, especially ones that are developed, we do, it's not the best seat at, uh, nine and, uh, Butler of the others. Are we gonna be doing workshops or door hangers for people, make sure everybody's aware of it, or is that not necessary for this one?
No, we'll be doing, uh, workshops with all those. In the actual IPOs, I believe, we believe that there is mentions of that. I think in the Old Dirt Main, there's mention of that one as well. Uh, so once we get further into the design, um, because as you'll see, I'm still looking at trying to acquire some properties and this one is not as associated with a, um, federal grant. So if we do have some time on this, and especially if I do acquire those properties, then we can shift the roadway further east, um, but we're definitely gonna be putting the water line on the west side.
Okay, just wanna make sure all the residents are on board so we don't run into issues and.
Understood.
And this is, um, a, a part of the, we've already approved that project, it was a while ago, um, but, you know, excellent point, councilperson Martini. We're gonna figure out, and then we have lots of opportunity to be burned with. All right, any additional items or questions on IPO number 152? Go ahead and see, that works.
Just real quick, Robert, I, for, uh, our, all of our consultants, is there a standard rate for these schedules?
As far as hourly?
Yeah.
Um, I'd have to take a look at that.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's a good catch, because I actually did some ciphering when, uh, we were talking about it. I think we do have that in the master.
Yeah, we have a master agreement and then through that master agreement, whenever there's a project, we just do an individual IPO for that, so we keep that as a separate line item in the budget.
Yeah, this would just came on this, you know, um, by work, um, breakdown, but not by individual doing the work. The overall, um, the overall hourly, hourly rate is 156, but I don't see how that's broken down by, uh, an engineer, front, or somebody.
Understood. And we'll, we'll reach that breakdown, um, either we can do that via each IPO and we say copy the master, overall master agreement. I understand what you're talking about.
Why don't you just do the master?
Okay.
So we need a master agreement, I think that's a great idea, and I, I think we should just go ahead and, you know, and we'll transparency, we don't have those rates written here so we all know what we're talking about. We know what they are.
Sure.
Sound good?
Yes, so, uh, in the proposal, uh, in the V sheet, there's actually a breakdown of hours per staffing category, um, and so, um, we do have that information. The hourly rate's not shown, but it's kind of in the numbers because it's the number of hours times hourly, but we can definitely include the hourly rate in a more clear fashion.
That'd be good. I, I don't think there's any harm to it, uh, you know, I like that.
Correct. But it is based upon the hourly rates from the, um, master contract.
Absolutely. They're always gonna be the same because that's the master agreement then, so if we modify that, that's what we agree on.
Correct. Not getting clean up the spreadsheet to show that clearly.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, councilperson David, good, good question. Um, any additional comments or questions, concerns on IPO number 115? Seeing none, hearing no whistles, we will begin voting with councilperson.
Aye.
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 Thank you, counsel. Um, item number two, this is IPO number, what did they vote through?
Yeah, no, IPO number.
Wait, what did I do? Did I go too fast? I went through, I voted, we didn't have a motion?
Right.
See, it's in after D48. So I apologize, let's go backwards, guys. Um, I told the new council members that if at any point they, they have a challenge, they can hit pause, so that's, that's on me, so I'm gonna pause myself. Um, so seeing no further questions, we have a motion to approve IPO number 15.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, councilperson Williams, she didn't have a second.
Second.
Second, from councilperson David. Any further discussion, counsel? Now we'll begin voting with councilperson David, let's do that again.
Aye.
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 Thank you, counsel, I appreciate that. Next up is, uh, item number D2, this is IPO number 119, it's our bestie stormwater improvements. Um, Robert will let you lead off here and then bring up the staff.
No problem. Yeah, this is just an addendum to the, um, original bestie, um, IPO, and all it is is new. And all it is, is including an area that was covered by the FEMA agreement that we just didn't add into the original IPO. So, it's expanding the original IPO to take care of third magnolia. All the requirements that were in the original IPO are in this IPO as far as maintaining the dirt roadway, making sure of existing widths, making sure that it's stormwater, having reviews of certain thresholds. So, it's the exact same IPO that you saw with the Butler and Bestie basins, but with this Bestie one, we're just adding that third magnolia area to be in line with the contract that we signed with FEMA and Department of Emergency Management.
Thank you, Robert. So, all of the same standards, and then we asked that applied to the other IPO will be the same?
Yes.
Council, any questions?
It's going to be roughly a separate project, or is it going to be a whole?
It's all the same, the basin area is just one big project.
Okay, so, so as far as the documentation goes, it's a little confusing, because a lot of it's in Bestie nine, but it didn't say magnitude one or the plot of the third magnolia. And if we're going to have a separate documentation, I'd like to see that as specific as possible in the header, just required on the page.
No problem.
And Councilperson Martini, I had asked Robert about this earlier. Normally, we have our executive summaries, which help us with, you know, knowing what each of the projects are specifically, especially when one's amending another, so... And he certainly agreed, and I think that was just a time constraint with stuff coming in late, so...
Yeah, I mean, the issue I had was, I mean, it's documentation, it's Bestie nine, but it's third magnolia, and we've also got a... We've got an estimate from one of those suppliers for the, I think it was sort of Old Main Street, or maybe it was the ninth.
Ninth and 10th?
Ninth and 10th, and their header, or their estimate says third magnolia.
Okay. And as far as this slide script is there?
No, we're not cutting paste, because the case they say case they price individually.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments, questions, concerns, council? Alright, hearing none, we'll look for a motion to approve IPO number 119.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councilperson Martini. Second?
Second.
Second, Councilperson Zach. Zach, Zach, any further discussion, council? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Councilperson Martini. Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, council. Now moving on to IPO number 120, this is the new IPO for, that's funny, the new IPO for Old Main Street, stormwater improvements from ninth to 10th Avenue.
Yeah, this one is separate, again, it's not associated with any FEMA grant or DDM grant. What this was, as a background for the new council members, is that when we were looking at the railroad roadway south of Seventh Avenue to 12th, we were negotiating property slots. Only one property owner agreed to the slot by that time, and that was the ward trustees. There has been a history of flooding in that area. I believe public forces have done everything they can in order to move the water wherever they can. But now that we have an actual area, because we needed our own tenth, before we started doing these property swaps, we're able to correct that stormwater issue in that area. So, this is a new project, it's self-funded, it's not funded by a grant that we're asking for approval from.
And those funds will come from stormwater?
Yeah, that'll come from stormwater assessment.
Council, any further questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, this is the one for, that has Bestie and Ninth Stormwater Ratings Improvements on the contractor's quote. I don't know if this page doesn't belong here, or if this is what the contractor actually supplied, and it is so, and you have to verify that these numbers are correct for this project, because, from my opinion, this project seems particularly expensive compared to the Bestie and Ninth project, which is more than three times the length. This one's approximately 750 feet. Bestie and Ninth is probably 2,000, 2,100 feet of roadway, so maybe Hal, you can give us a quick synopsis of why this is priced accordingly? I know you answered this question previously, but by email, but if you could just clarify that for everyone.
Sure, and may I ask, what page did you reference that you did? May I correctly reference the Bestie and Butler? I thought I would do this pretty well.
I'm looking at page 206 of the agenda, I tried to just count you, but 206 of the agenda.
Is it one of our subs consultants? Echo or?
I can make this, if you give a piece of paper in the wrong place, it is gonna...
The one that we made, or first, Old Main Street, ninth to 10th Avenue.
Correct, I see that. Yes, I'll definitely refer that with our subs consultant, but the reason why is it's very similar work. It's 115 foot boring to determine the storm condition, and then a DRI test, which is an improvement ability test that we use for our range design. Now, this proposal, like I said, is what Robert said, is new. You know, with Bestie and Butler, we did a lot of the, we did a lot of the sub work, the survey, and the geotech ahead of time. So, if you look at our V sheet, which has the breakdown, that would be the last sheet where it might come, the sheet where my signature is, where it shows task 1 through 6. So, the reason why this may seem high at 40,000 is actually because the task 5 and the task 6 is the build work, which is a full survey of the area, including utility design gates. We did find some utilities out there when we did our build visit, and also for the geotech, it's going to be that one boring and the 115 foot boring and the associate probability test. I apologize that our geotech put the wrong header on there. I'll make sure, I'll double check with him to get that fixed and to make sure that that is correct.
Yeah, if you would just make sure that those numbers are specific in this project, and not just copy paste.
Yes, sir, and I believe that the numbers are correct, because it's the same scope of work, just at a different location, but I will definitely verify that. So, out of that 40,000, $12,000 approximately is the data gathering base. The other 20,000 is the design and the business and the construction phase service, so that 20,000 is all inclusive, from the moment we start the design to the moment that, you know, it's completed with construction. And we're following the same format that we did for Bestie and Butler. It's kind of based upon our lessons learned, with all the valuable feedback that we got. So, we're going to be doing the same thing, where we're going to do 45% plans, have public involvement, both, you know, through either Zoom meetings or public workshops like we did for Bestie and Butler. So, we have those budgeted as well, as well as town council meeting for approval of the concept, because this is, this is similar to that, where we're trying to grade swells at inlets where possible, while maintaining the dirt roads and minimizing impacts to trees. So, we know that there'll be a lot of valuable input for that, and so, the reason why the fee is what it is, is because it includes everything that we did for Bestie and Butler, you know, but for this section from ninth to 10th, oh, the past 10th on Old Main Street.
Okay, and as we all learned from Bestie and Butler projects, and more public input we have, before we get rolled better up, we're all seen, so yeah, looking forward to those workshops.
Definitely, and we know that each road in the town is unique, so we know that it goes through a lot of input and a lot of iterations, and so, we've built that into our proposal to make sure you get the product that you need and that you want.
Well, we appreciate your patience with that, too.
It's an experience, but I enjoy it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we can just send an email, you know, verification of the right header, and, you know, we're proving it up to it anyway.
Correct, so I definitely will. I have some notes where I'm going to check back, as well as I'm going to put the hourly rate sheet as an additional sheet where we have our fee, so you know exactly what each staffing category is without having to kind of dig through our sheets, our spreadsheet.
One last question, did you ask Echo Company to put a total on their proposal? They've got a breakdown, but it's, they don't have a total like the other providers do.
Sure.
So, I think he said we're difficult, and they price accordingly.
$10,000 for every question.
And I appreciate, but I do like that I hear the recognition of kind of...
More than important, so.
And if it comes to a little cost, then a big cost, maybe certainly others can add, because it is exactly what we want. Alright, council, any further questions for item number three, IPO number 120? Seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councilperson Williams, looking for a second.
I'll flip.
Second from Councilperson Martini. Any further comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Councilperson David. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, council, carrying that motion unanimously. Item number four, this is IPO, this one's exciting, obviously. This is IPO number 121, as we continue to make solid, steady progress towards our multi-modal path phase one design.
Correct, yes, Mayor, this is going to, this IPO is specifically for the design of the trail, which will include, again, public outreach, public inputs, and meetings. And currently, this scope is from north all the way to Park Avenue, and to make sure that it ties into the design of the bridge. So, this is something that is self-funded, and it's something that we do put into our reserves based on the tax increase of, I believe, 2018. So, we're able to not only self-fund this, but in addition to that, through our appropriations requests, we are looking to hopefully get $300,000 for the multi-modal trail. It's in the state house bill, but it's not in the state senate bill. They do their negotiations, I believe, on the 16th, so after that, we'll see where we stand, and then whether the governor will sign it as is or request additional amendments. In addition to that, we are still working with West Orange Healthcare Alliance, which I do believe we will hopefully do a customization through them in May, so that's additional money to offset some of those costs. And in addition to that, we do have this into our federal appropriations as well.
Certainly, like I said, I'm excited, and I know that everybody else is as well, that we're making good on something that we started 10 years ago, worked tirelessly on, and we've had a lot of zings and zags, but it's exciting to see it come to fruition. And I'm glad we've been putting our own money aside for it, and staying true to what we promised in 2018. We did raise taxes a little bit, but we did it for a specific reason, and it wasn't for general operating, it was for new infrastructure improvements, and this is going to be one of those. Council, any questions, comments, or anything that you saw on there, if you want to make note of it? Councilperson Zach?
Just a quick question for Robert, the quickly worn folks. So, your subs consultants, are they part of the MSN? Aye.
They are not, and that has largely allowed us to remain flexible to grab additional subs if we didn't think of who we might need at that time.
Okay, is there, is there a threshold value that they need to be competitive with it, or is that what you're expressing?
Yeah, it's at our, it's at our discretion as long as we can see, I mean, the threshold is a threshold, but it's technically, we come and play themselves, it's over $500,000.
Thank you.
Any additional, Councilperson David?
Yep.
Are you good there?
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that, you know, goes through the maintenance, the decent, ongoing planning, it's kept an eye on it, and it's really hard, especially against the landscape for...
Absolutely. Yeah, we make sure that happens, as well as there's additional public input here as well. Anything further, council? Seeing none, looking for a motion to approve IPO number 121. Motion to approve. Motion to approve, Councilperson David. Do we have a second? Second, Councilperson David. Any further comments, questions, concerns, council? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Councilperson Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
That will carry, and thank you, council. Off to section E, this is financial, it's for purchase authorizations for the following railway, railroad railway parcels. Many of you will know that we purchased a great deal of the railroad railway from the work family, and then Robert has been using that cost basis to negotiate for various segments and portions of property that we need to continue multi-modal path. Robert, you want to make any comment on these? I think we could, if council agrees, we could approve all of them as one item?
Yes, you can approve all as one item, with the understanding that the only one that may change is the Grupo one, because we're working on what Orange Main Property Fazers has on their site as far as the .08, or is it actually .48 like all the others? So, that might be the only discrepancy, but the intent is to buy those properties at the same cost per acre that we did with the ward transaction, which was about 44,000 change per acre, so we just buy that into whatever percentage of acre that they have. Currently, I've spoken with Mr. and Mrs. Massey, they've agreed to the purchase price with the $1,000 for attorney's fees, and I have, I spoke to Mr. Denoyl today, and he's been talking it over with his family to see if they're going to sell as well. But we're working on a meeting where we did door hangers. We tried it one time, and nobody showed up, but we're trying it again, because now we're starting to see that there's dollar signs behind it, and hopefully we're able to borrow.
Sounds good, so basically, we're just giving the authorization here, and then you'll come back with the actual numbers if they vary.
Yeah, I'll come back with, the intent is to, if you authorize this as far as the purchase price per acre, then I can go ahead and negotiate that with them, and then Heather can draft the documents for them to sign, so I wouldn't have to keep coming back to you.
Right, and the authorization is signed up from there.
Correct.
Sounds good. Council, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to, I guess for the sake of time, we don't need to see every contract that comes through here, and it's just permission to give you, you know, authority, matter of authority to sign a...
Correct.
Standard bidding plan contract.
Yes, for these properties, these side properties at that price per acre, and $1,000 for the attorney's fees. So, we'd have to bring back the Denoyls, the Harts, the Grupo contracts back for pool, town council meetings, just give us authorization to go ahead and make that offer, and if they agree to it, then do the contract.
Okay, that I think part of your negotiations, I mean, we're first with closing, you know, and putting a 30-day timeframe, we'll have to go to council to approve contracts, try to avoid that.
Agreed.
Just for the...
Yes.
It is a... Yeah, good.
The one that we would really happy to see purchased is the Massey property, because it impacts two projects, West Second Avenue and the Old Main paving, and with that purchase, we're able to shift it a little bit, so we can save that large folk on the corner of West Second Avenue and Main.
Good, good, I love that. Thank you, Councilperson Zach, for the great points. Any further conversation, council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve all these items. Aye.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councilperson Zach, do you have a second?
Second.
Did anybody get those? Second, Councilperson David, thank you, sir. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, we begin voting with Councilperson Martini. Aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. This is, this is on the way. I appreciate everybody's hard work as well as all those people who are nice enough to work with us to sell the property and make that multi-modal path something we can all go into. At this point, counsel, any other items for consideration? And we'll move to mayoral and council liaison reports. Counsel, any items that you would like to report on? You can give Counselperson Williams.
Yes. Elder's luncheon was held today. Susan and her group, team of volunteers, delivered 77 meals to all the elders. HPP did try to meet last, but we did not have an forum, did discuss the announces. So it's a table. We're going to try to meet on the night.
Yeah, the more you talk about this, the less your forum might be. All right. Thank you for all your hard work, sir. Counselperson Davy. Thank you, sir. Counselperson Martini.
I've got, I've got some notes from the tree board on the liaison. I did the last meeting and there's a new program that's starting up called City Nature Challenge Orlando Metro. And it's, Susan, you want to take like one minute or Robert, tell us what that is?
Yeah, it's a one-week challenge. It's a nationwide challenge. It's via the iNaturalist app. So what you do is download this app and during that period, you would walk around your specific area, which would be the, you know, Orange County area, and take pictures of, you know, plants, animals, stuff that you can see in your yard. And then you can identify it. And the challenge is, you know, which, where the Central Florida area, of how many species are identified in that area. But it's a worldwide thing, but they add a specific challenge from April 30th to early May, which is right after Earth Day. But it's a great way to, you know, spend time with the family, go out, just take pictures of stuff, you walk through nature. Not only does it, you know, get your family involved in figuring out what types of, you know, vegetation or animals you have in your area, but it also helps the environmentalists know exactly, you know, what you have in your area as well, what may be starting to become an issue as far as invasive. You know, there's been situations where they've found animals that are, you know, they're from Japan and now they're here. So this is a really cool thing to do, you know, the family also is going to help, you know, the environmentalists figure out what's going on as far as, like a term of nature in your area. So we have the flyers, we're starting to promote it. And then as we get closer to April 30th, we're going to promote even more. And I do believe we're going to be holding to online sessions for the people that need to use assistance in navigating the app. Because some of the attendees had some issues with that. It could be somewhat complicated, but we're working on getting that up. In addition to that, we're just going to create a town of winter near everyone where people can continuously upload those pictures so we can keep that data in play.
Sounds good. Pokemon Go.
Pokemon Go.
What nature Pokemon?
Also, Central Park update and planting project, the source has been identified for buying trees. It was about one-fourth of the cost of the other vendor, but we're going to use our own public works and volunteers to plant the trees. So we're going to save $6,000 for the cost of the project. So good job, people.
That's it. Thank you, Counselperson Martini. Counselmember David, anything for our mayor or mayor and council liaison reports? Put you on the spot, see? It's okay. You'll take a pass. Obviously, you can always do that. Counselman Davy.
Uh, nothing.
Thank you. And appreciate you guys. You guys are doing great. We're making good progress. Staff reports, who are we getting with Tom Anderson?
Yes, as I said before, through the state appropriations, we are in the House bill, but we're not in the senate bill. So they do have their conference coming up. So hopefully we will get that $300,000 for the multi-modal path. We're still waiting on word of when we're going to be receiving 1.4 million relative to American Recovery Act. So we'll continue to attend those Friday meetings. We did put in for the same appropriations through the federal appropriations. So hopefully we get some good news back from that, especially with the $2 million stimulus plan that they're working on right now, which goes directly to infrastructure and every one of our projects are infrastructure related. Reminder too is that I have my well-attended Q and A tomorrow night. So if anybody wants to ask any questions, town-related especially, we're more happy to answer those questions at seven o'clock tomorrow night. And I did send you an update on the progress of Burr Island, establishing the swim area. The CWA is kind of, the Kirkwood Island area is kind of pulled right now, but they're making a lot of great progress on the actual swim area. So at least we're seeing movement and hopefully that will curtail a lot of the issues that we're seeing over there.
Nice thing, Robert, that we get half of the funding, like a 30 days, right?
What's that?
For the American Rescue Plan, we get half the funding and then another half, right?
We get 750 and then after a year, 12 months, then we get additional 750.
That's great. All right.
Are there limitations on what we can do with that money?
Yes.
So we're still waiting. The treasury hasn't come out of all the guidance yet. Cause I'm, I'm hopeful that they're going to be pretty broad.
Yeah. My hope is that the infrastructure right now just has broadband, water, wastewater. I don't believe it addresses stormwater. I'll have to check that again. But a lot of people want clarity on what infrastructure means in the American Recovery Act. I'm hoping it is broadened to roads, sidewalks, stuff like that. So we'll be able to go ahead and spend it according to what they require.
Great. So we're hoping to get some broad treasury feedback.
Questions on that funding? Does it have to be used in a certain amount of time? If we are restricted to, let's just say roads, we can't put it in a ready date on, ready to prepare something, make sure your confidence is safe.
No, you have to spend it within, I think, four years.
Second question is, do you want to pay us some for the water in this state appropriations? I did this through committee for eight weeks, wait, not since I'm here.
Didn't make it into the bill.
Oh, it did not?
Yeah. It went through appropriations, but then didn't make it into the bill. I have no idea why it didn't go in there. But hopefully we get some state, not state funding, but federal funding for those projects.
It's possible, I mean, how broad the American Rescue Plan gets and the infrastructure plan, if it passes, if there's any money left, we could be able to possibly give you some more. I say that carefully because it's only asked to have a COVID tieback, but I don't think all of it's going to have to. It's going to be more about stimulus, more about, you know, any, anything you can do to help people who are potentially behind payments, mortgages.
Mortgage.
Homes. So there's, you know, everybody's kind of waiting. I think the first bill, we saw the first municipal bill, everybody wanted to jump out in front of it because we all thought that was going to be the way to go. But I think what we learned was if you pull back a little bit, they tend to lose. This is maybe one, everyone is spending money.
Yeah, that was the same. Everybody jumped on forward first, you know, kind of got spanked for it. But yeah, you gotta track it. More broader.
So we're paying close attention. Mayor? Yes, sir. Robert, you mentioned Burr Island and I think you're backtrack, but I don't remember a budget completion sign.
Was there a Butler team?
I did not make a Butler team, please, because I believe we already had one assigned by our, by our commission. That was on the list. Now, if we're allowed to on certain.
Yeah, we have, CT Allen is on the board, but we did have Lysander as a liaison to attend meetings and update us on what's going on there.
All right, so.
And now I can just ask CT for just a.
No, I think it'd be great to give updates. Good to have someone, but it's really just a matter of, I think you have to be passionate if you're going to be on that, that board. So, because it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of data and also it's, makes, you make progress, but it's a, it's a long road. Anybody interested?
I don't have a lot of tea.
I think CT would be great to give us updates.
She's not watching, so.
Hey, you, CT.
On my shirt, I was.
I don't even think we have to make a motion for that. We just didn't like it. All right. Never mind. Remind. All right. Anything further?
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Counselor Ringo, anything from you? Thank you for your invites to the always interesting, your source is always a great guy to hear from, you know.
I have a rebuild plan I'll hide it for you real quick. Cause I promised you last time. So House Bill 403 is a home-based business bill. And this is a little, seems a little bit concerning for local governments because it allows home-based businesses in any residential areas. It cramps any of the challengeability to regulate someone from running the business in their home. And there's a couple of restrictions on that. The employees, the whole base business must reside in the residence except for up to two initial employees that can come every day and work there. The second, the party to the home-based business was implied with the town's zoning requirements. Third, the activities of the home-based business must be set in their property to use as residential dwelling. And fourth, as viewed from the street, the use of the residential property must be consistent with the use of the residential areas. Another bill that's, I think this one's really good for the town, is House Bill 623, which deals with tree pruning. In 2019, the statute was put in place which allowed a property owner to prune, trim, or remove trees without notice to the town. And so the House Bill right now, the new one, is going to repeal. If it goes through, it won't repeal that law. And then the last one that I was keeping my eye on for you guys is the Sovereign Unity Bill, which is 1678. And that increases the limits on lighter living for torque claims for an individual up to $500,000 and 1 million for equipment claims that rise out of the same incident. That's up from $200,000 and $300,000. And I'll give you an update the next time the case has been presented.
So it's $500,000 without legislature, legislature approval?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, that is a big difference. Thank you very much. Chief?
A couple of quick things. I appreciate that Counselperson Davy showed up to our training. It was probably a good day, so hopefully you had a good time.
Did you taze in?
We did not. Too tased. That'll be coming up next month or so.
Okay.
Officer Wilson is doing great. He'll probably be fast-tracked pretty soon, which is a process that we have because he's a senior experienced officer. It'll probably go through a little bit quicker, which would be great because we have a few officers that are injured right now. I just saw them earlier today. He had a condition offer hired the other agent, Officer DeCarlo. So it's the initial last portion of his background. He's got five years in Citrus County and a lot of great experience. We're looking forward to incoming board. Just, just kind of FYI, DC will be out for next week for short surgery yourself. Actually, we're saying okay because since we're short on vehicles, we're going to be doing some vehicle swapping. It's going to get us through the.
But you might go actually to state shift or something.
Yeah, yeah, you know, a little bit. I think, I have not sent you guys an email, but I scheduled the pictures for June 29th. So we'll make sure we get pictures of the new council members. If you want your picture retaking, we make sure we do that every year for the staff, just so we have some professional photos, photos. And we are applying right now for the next JAG grant that's out there. So I'm looking in the process for a few other grants that are out there as well.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Just to add on to that too, we are looking at two bills. One is going to attempt to remove the qualified immunity from officers. And then also looking at the Marcin's law. We've certainly been on that one as well.
Yes. Welcome. Any more?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I know it's late, so I'm going to try to get through this list of like 15 items really quickly. Fourth Avenue, we're putting up a bill to burn the signs out. This is not as of today. The Dr. Burnwood was rebraced, it's now back open to the public. The only thing we're waiting on is the deck and the sun off for the beautiful once that's done. Fill the cabinets around the electrical panels of the pavilion of Wyndham Avenue and add electrical, I want people outlet there because there actually wasn't one. We've done some roadwork after the storms this weekend. All the roads were in pretty good condition, but our team was under addressing any of the need of attention. We're going through the back roads and addressing the faded stop signs. We dug out around the speed hubs on Richmond. We started looking at the tree canopy at Johnson Park and addressing the drainage ditch there for storm season. We're addressing, we addressed the problem trees that couldn't be erect because branches could fall in on the tennis courts interfering with residents' ability and how those were raised on two pieces there. So we took care of that. We've got the scorekeepers of the monumentary wreck and the main street ports. We're looking at reducing our uniform cost of public work. So I just wanted to know that hopefully within the next few weeks, we see the public work team in uniform. This is not costing any, any additional funding. Hopefully it's going to actually reduce costs, but it'll help them stay a little cooler in the summer too. We've established a street, a scheduled street sweeping on Wednesday, the third Wednesday of every month, starting in May. They'll be here April 23rd this month, but I want to have standard schedules so residents know that street sweeping is happening. So we've gotten to reading that. We're cleaning drains, we're meeting with Enviro to finalize the schedule with them, align services with the future master plan and findings. We're researching some new roadway materials that align and look and feel good in Wyndham Avenue, but also provide a roadway stabilization. We'll look for that more to come to you all over that. We're seeing additional quotes for the flat roof at Town Hall. We hope to get that underway pretty soon. Also, based on recommendations from Parks and Recreation Board, public works to getting two to twelve posts for resurfacing the tennis courts at Main Street and also to add some potential for walkways in Wyndham Avenue and Rec Center. So those things are continuing along and progressing. And then our staff is up during their daily transport because tree limbs and vehicles facing signs throughout the game. So very, very, very pleased to have the Lord's team. So I'm very proud of their efforts.
Thank you and welcome. I hope that you're settling in nicely and hearing great things.
Appreciate it. It's warm, folks. Everyone's been very welcoming. I would like to thank Mr. Jopitz-Givens because he has been fantastic, a wonderful resource.
Very good on the word. Boy, that didn't last long. We were on a meter. We need to get to 30,000 even counting. Oh, that's right. At least it didn't say that.
I'm only here one, ten days and I'm already saying you can't take Jopitz-Givens anywhere.
We could have told you that on the first day. We're cold here. Thank you. Just amending, you know, votes, right? And Chief, I have to give a credit. Is that a contract they turned into an oath for the chaplain here? Oh, my God. Wow. That's, that's like four times longer than that. I just, I was just thinking about it. It's like head is thorough. I'll take one copy of your law and then very much.
Eric, one, one last question. Resident asked if there was updated drawings for the Vessi project. It was preliminary. I forwarded that request to Robert. We sent it out, out and so if you could respond back on that tomorrow, that'd be great. Or if you could respond now.
Yeah, I forwarded that to how this, right when I got that text from you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for reminding me.
So at this point in time, we do not have updated drawings yet. The reason why is because we added additional scope areas for the request of the study. That would be on Oakdale Street, one block north and one block south.
Right.
As well as on Dayton Avenue, that intersection of that block right there. So based upon the survey, the surveyor is, should be out there doing work. He notified us last week when we notified the town. So in summary, the schedule for the Vessi 45% plans and exhibits is in, in May, so in about a month. And then at that point in time, we'll submit that to Tom and Robert and we will reach out to the town and have the meetings and share that with everybody.
That's the 45%?
That's correct.
That is. Okay.
Thank you. So it'll be about a month.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, sir. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned at nine thirty p.m.